All right, well, Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to the first meeting of 2021. I hope you all had a nice little break. So let's go ahead and get started. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Yes. The C.
Here.
Camson.
Here.
Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel.
Present.
Jordan.
Here.
Mitt.
Here.
Here. Okay, thank you very much. So I duly called this meeting to order. And first, on our agenda, we have the PALS assessment results for reading and math. Dr. Birdsong, can you please go ahead with that?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board and members of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts with you this afternoon. Today, we will share with you a few updates related to academic affairs, school leadership, and business and finance as it relates to the governor's proposed budget. The administration is also looking forward to the board's discussion regarding their budget priorities for fiscal year 2022. This is a critical time for us in public education as we continue to monitor health conditions to determine when it's safe for students and staff to return to in-person instruction. As COVID-19 cases continue to rise within the city of Norfolk and around the region, there's a growing concern about when our instructional plan for in-person learning can be implemented. We continue to receive feedback from our parents and community members with varying views and opinions regarding this ongoing dilemma. The information that has recently been provided to us regarding the availability of the COVID-19 vaccine to K-12 educators is quite encouraging and gives us hope that we are closer to moving beyond this pandemic. More details regarding this matter are forthcoming. In accordance with the board's decision at its December meeting, this administration is prepared and committed to implementing the FASES plan for returning to in-person instruction in alignment with the status of the recommended three core indicators outlined within the CDC's indicators for dynamic decision-making, which includes case incidence per 1,000 persons within the past 14 days, percent positivity during the past 14 days, and the school division's readiness to implement the key mitigation strategies. As I previously shared with you, our Norfolk Public Schools' health metrics dashboard is now live on the division's website and gives a clear snapshot of the status of these three core indicators. We hope the information that we share with the board this afternoon will also be helpful to our families and community members in remaining informed and up-to-date throughout this decision-making process. This afternoon, Dr. James Poole, our chief academic officer, will begin our presentation with a review of the PALS reading and mathematics results. As you may be aware, the phonological awareness literacy screening, or PALS as we refer to it, is an assessment tool that measures students' literacy development and is administered to students in pre-K, kindergarten, grade one, grade two, and some grade three students. Next, Dr. Poole and Dr. Lanell Gibson, our chief schools officer, will provide updates regarding the school division's instructional plan for in-person learning and overview of the variety of data that we're currently using to assess the level of individual students' performance, to include examples of strategies being utilized to address achievement gaps, as well as accountability measures that are in place to better ensure each student's success. Dr. Gibson will then review and discuss pertinent information regarding the School Resource Officer Program and the Correlating Draft MOU as you review the public comments received on these items. And finally, Mr. Steve Jenkins, our chief finance officer, will provide an update on Governor Northam's budget, as well as our revenue sharing policy with the city of Norfolk. We hope that you find this presentation or presentations to be helpful as you continue in your discussions and deliberations. Thank you, Madam Chair Martin, Mr. Vice Chairman Jordan, and members of the school board. This concludes my remarks for this afternoon, and I will now turn it over to Dr. Poole to get us started with our first presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Mr. Jordan, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this afternoon with Ms. Felaton, principal of WH Taylor Elementary, and Ms. New, principal of Ocean View Elementary, to present the first phonological awareness literacy screening, or PALS, dataset for this school year. PALS is an assessment tool that measures students' literacy development and is administered to all students in pre-kindergarten through grade two and select students in grade three. The pre-K assessment includes six tasks: name writing, rhyme awareness, sound awareness, uppercase letter recognition. This is where students are asked to name one of the uppercase letters in random order. And for those who score 16 or more on the uppercase letter recognition, they're required to move on to the lowercase letter recognition task. If they identify nine or more of these letters, they're then required to move on to the letter sound awareness task. During traditional face-to-face testing, there's also a print-in-word awareness task. Due to the need for close proximity to assess this, the PALS office eliminated this across the Commonwealth for the 2021 school year. The kindergarten assessment has the following six skills: rhyme awareness, beginning sound awareness, alphabet knowledge, letter sounds, spelling and concept of word. However, due to virtual learning concept of word was not administered to kindergarteners across the Commonwealth as recommended by the Commonwealth's PALS office. PALS pre-K, next slide, please, Ms. Tanner. PALS pre-K was designed as a diagnostic tool to help teachers, to help guide teachers' literacy instruction, while PALS K and PALS 1 through 3 were designed to serve as a screening function in identifying children who likely need additional instruction beyond what typically is provided in the classroom literacy instruction. Students in grades 1 through 3 are given the following tasks in the fall, which determine their Sums score. First grade students focus on letter sounds, word recognition, and spelling, while second and third grade students focus on word recognition and spelling. Additionally, oral reading in context is given to first through third, however, this score is not included in their Sums score. Although PALS can be a universal screening tool in kindergarten and through third grade, Norfolk Public Schools uses STAR for grades 2 and 3. Therefore, PALS is the NPS screening tool for grades K through 1, and it's given three times a year. Quick checks are given as progress monitoring tools throughout here, and the testing windows for PALS this year were established as the fall window was October 12 through November 19th. Winter is January 4 through February 2, and spring is April 22 through May 21. With the addition of policy IA this year, or the addition to policy IA this year, parent notification letters have been sent home for the fall assessment and will be sent home for other assessment windows if a student's score identified them as needing to receive supplemental literacy intervention. Video, we require the administration of PALS regardless of the school division is 100% virtual, using a hybrid model, or students and teachers have returned to face-to-face instruction. Therefore, PALS and PALS pre-K were administered to students in pre-K through 3 in person and through remote testing. The goal was to have any first-time assessment be administered face-to-face, as well as any students who scored low for their last assessment, which would have been the winter window last year. All other students were to be assessed remotely. However, due to the safety of our students and staff, not all students scheduled for face-to-face testing were able to test in person. Additionally, the video we considers the PALS remote or online assessment a non-standard test administration since all portions of the test cannot be given. Tonight, for the data portion of the presentation, we'll begin with pre-K data. For this data, the overall data will be shared in each testing area. For name writing, zero represents the lowest scores, while a score of seven is the highest score. Overall, there were no significant changes to the data as compared to last year's initial data. There was a small decrease from 48% to 47.3% when combining the zero-three scores as compared to last year's score. For rhyme awareness, the scores are from 0 to 10, with 10 being the highest score. Although the highest growth was in the zero score, there was a decrease from 65.7% of the students scoring between 0 and 4 last year to 63.6% this year. For sound awareness, there are no significant changes. There was growth in the scores of 5 through 10. Last year, 42.6% of the students scored in this range, while 43.4% were in that range this year. Scores for uppercase alphabet are scored based on how many letters a student can identify. This year's data show a higher percentage of students scoring in the middle score groups. Based on the fall results for PALS pre-K, teachers are encouraged and coached to use the data as a baseline set for pre-K students. The data is used to create a focus for small group instruction and one-on-one sessions. The data is also used to ensure students are strengthening their literacy knowledge through working in centers when students are in classrooms. Teachers also use the data to find common developmental themes that all students need to show growth in when planning circle time and read aloud focus. This data is also used when reviewing and assigning activities from the creative curriculum that is in use with our pre-K classrooms for at-home use. And although English learners are not designated at the pre-K level, the new curriculum platform offers activities in Spanish to offer our students who may be in EL families and need that extra assistance. Sorry about this. Moving to kindergarten data, the data presented will focus on summary scores for each category. This slide shows data of students identified of needing intervention by gap groups. The multi-group is what is also referred to students of two or more races. The other group includes a combination of Indian and Pacific Islander students. As expected, there are increases in all but one gap group of students identifying as needing intervention. Here is a summary score representing the percent of students who met benchmark as compared to last year's fall assessment. Again, each category showed a decrease of students meeting the benchmark. This graph shows the differences in the Sums score ranges. The blue represents last year's data, and the yellow represents this year. As the graph shows, this year, there were more students scoring in the lower ranges as compared to last year. Moving to the first grade data, the data will presented to continue to focus on summary scores for each category. This slide shows data of students identified of needing intervention by gap group. Again, there are increases in all but two gap groups of students identified of needing intervention. This chart shows the percent of students at or above the benchmark score for last year and this year. There were fewer students making the benchmark this year. As with kindergarten, this graph shows more students in the lower score bands than last year. The most significant growth areas were within the 10 to 19 range and the 20 to 29 range bands. Moving to second grade, the data presented will continue to focus on the summary scores for each category. This slide shows data of students identified of needing intervention by gap group. Again, there are increases in all but three gap groups of students identified of needing This chart shows the percent of students at or above the benchmark score for last year and this year. Again, there were fewer students making the benchmark this year. However, the differences for spelling and entry-level Sums score did not have as great a decrease as the word recognition. As with the other grades, the peaks for 19, 20 show higher levels of performance than were shown with this year's data. Next slide, please, Ms. Tanner. As reported in November, students were identified through STAR data as needing intervention or urgent intervention. The STAR data is shown on this slide to compare second-grade subgroups who are identified for intervention with STAR to those identified as needing intervention with PALS. Based on this data, there is a continued focus of the phonemic awareness and phonics curriculum. The English office continues to monitor implementation of the curriculum and provide professional development on implementation, along with strategies during asynchronous Wednesdays. Additionally, reading specialists are assisting kindergarten teachers with the implementation of this new curriculum. The next steps directly align needs based on PALS data and focusing on building foundational literacy skills on phonemic awareness and phonics. Students need explicit instruction in both to become fluent ring readers. This needs to be done with a sense of urgency, which is why an entire curriculum for first grade was created this past summer and is being implemented this year. Focusing on equipping our Title I teachers with the tools to remediate and intervene directly aligned with student needs made evident in PALS data focused on spelling and word recognition. As noted in the STAR presentation, teachers are participating in language essentials for teaching, teachers of reading and spelling, or letters courses. This is a two-year course with cohort two starting this year. The cohorts consist of special education teachers, English language learner teachers, general first-grade teachers, and reading specialists. In fact, the Letters Cohort 1 assisted with the development of the new first-grade curriculum we implemented this year. The learning support special education team will work with curriculum and instruction to identify what PALS training has been provided to general education teachers and determine which special education staff participated in order to ensure division-wide training for special education staff. Additionally, learning support will identify a program or curriculum for use with students with disabilities and special education teachers and staff to provide additional interventions and consultation with CNI and Title I based on what is already in place. Similarly, the ESL office will ensure ESL teachers have the appropriate professional development and needed resources to best support our EL students. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Ms. Felaton, proud principal of WH Taylor Elementary School.
Dr. Poole, and good evening, and thank you for inviting us to present this evening. I know Ms. New and I are excited to share with you. At WH Taylor, this year, we schedule with mornings as set aside for tier-one instruction so that afternoons could be used for all tier-two, tier-three, and intervention groups. Teachers, as a accountability measure, our teachers have written goals based upon subgroups at each tier. In grades pre-K through 1, our goals are written using PALS data, and grades 2, goals are written using STAR data with an also-embedded PALS focus. Each quarter, our teachers are preparing take-home reading kits, using district resources, practice manipulatives, and other materials that they needed to deliver their virtual instruction. All of our kits are picked up by parents and are delivered to the houses by our staff members to make sure that every child has what he or she needs to be successful. Our students who need tier-two and tier-three interventions are placed into strategic afternoon groups based on identified data, but these groups are led by classroom teachers, special education teachers, and our paraprofessional team as well. This year, our teachers have also designated days and times within their afternoon schedules where students can come in for the needed support that they have in any content so that it allows them to support with work completion or just targeted assistance. With our SOL Safety Net funding, we've adopted a phonics-for-reading program by Curriculum and Associates, which can be delivered by my paraprofessional team in the afternoon small groups on one-on-one sessions as well. This program will be used with students in grades 2, 3, and 4 as they've been screened and placed into Level Text to practice explicit decoding strategies. We've also started a PD series with grades 1 and 2 on basic reading instruction going through phonics, phonemic awareness, and fluency instruction. With SOL Safety Net funds, we've also been able to purchase Learning A to Z subscriptions to support our teachers' access to Level Text, phonics readers, decodables, and other resources that are used in the virtual environment. At WH Taylor, as you know, we have a part-time reading specialist who works with our teachers about one or two days a week, but unfortunately, because we don't have an intervention specialist, our teachers and paras are providing the targeted instruction. We are looking to hire part-time teachers with our Safety Net fund. This year, we are also using our gifted resource teacher to push into morning shared reading groups for the second grade to allow the classroom teacher to pull smaller groups to support students with strategies as they engage in grade-level text. At WH Taylor, we're constantly monitoring data, making adjustments to groups, delivering instructional materials, supporting our families in as many different ways as possible. Our doors are always open, and they are always coming, parents and family members are coming in and out to pick up new materials as they need to make adjustments and to support the needs of the students. And that's it for me, but I am going to pass the mic on to my colleague, Ms. New, the principal at Ocean View.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Felaton. Ocean View has always been a school that focuses on data to support student achievement, and this year, although we're virtual, there was nothing different. In September, we hit the ground zooming and scheduling to meet our testing deadlines. In the middle of a pandemic, logistics were crucial for establishing a safe testing environment. We knew a few of our teachers were not comfortable with in-person testing, and we had a backup plan ready to go. Using my Title I funding, I have been able to hire four interventionists, as well as a Title I specialist. Our interventionists and our specialists met on numerous Zoom meetings to get a PALS, VKRP testing schedule in place that would provide both a safe location and give us the most accurate scores. We had seven rooms set up with gloves, wipes, sanitizer, and plexiglass shields. Parents were notified and given the choice for either in-person or virtual testing situation for their child. With all hands on deck, we had these seven staff members and a few classroom teachers test over 98% of our students for PALS and 66 for VKRP, which had to be done in person. We had a PALS completion rate of 98% for our K through 3 students. After testing was completed, grade-level data meetings were conducted to identify the needs of all of our students. After much discussion, teachers and specialists determined student need according to their skill proficiency using multiple data points, with an emphasis on PALS, STAR, and our district benchmarks. An Ocean View intervention schedule was developed and implemented in November. Over 192 students in grades K through 5 are currently receiving additional data-specific academic support beyond what is being provided by the classroom teacher. In addition, every child below benchmark in grades K through 3 had been provided with small group support at least three times a week. Our special needs students also receive interventions, but because of their very specific needs, it is a very individualized type of a plan. For example, instead of a 25-minute small group with three students in a breakout room, a particular special needs student may need a one-on-one intervention for a shorter amount of time every day of the week. Our special education teachers work very closely with their general education teachers as well as our interventionists. Our EL students are also a very large focus in our intervention plan. They are a very growing population at Ocean View. Our EL teacher, Ms. Alptkin, worked extensively with our students and our EL families. She has gone on countless visits to homes, delivering devices, materials, supplies, and assisting teachers with talking points, which is a translation service to help with communication. In addition to this, we have been very lucky to have the support from Ms. Joy Martin, the lead ESL teacher in our district. She and Ms. Alptkin have provided a series of school-wide professional development, which assists all of our staff with best practices for our EL students, as well as all students. We began our PD sessions on our Wednesdays, and they are now a monthly occurrence with all staff, including our resource teachers and administration team going to these sessions. With supporting our small group instruction, our kindergarten and first-grade teachers had placed plastic pickup bins in front of our school that are available to our parents 24/7. These bins are labeled by homeroom teacher, and inside, each student has a folder specifically designed for their individual reading needs. Students will find leveled readers that are used for their small group lessons, as well as the systematic phonics workbooks that have been supplied to us from the English office. These bins are updated with new books and activities every two weeks. If parents are not able to get up to our school, teachers will do house drop-offs, and I have also assisted with going to our many daycare centers that are assisting us with our virtual learning. We know that by supplying these resources to be used at home to enhance reading and phonics instruction, we are making success at Ocean View in a virtual teaching environment. Thank you for allowing me to share our Ocean View story, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Poole.
Thank you to both Ms. Felaton and Ms. New for sharing all of the work they're doing to use this data in support of student achievement. At this time, we stand ready for any questions the board may have.
Okay, I got it. So sorry, Dr. Gabriel, Ms. Camson, and Ms. Bessine, please.
Okay. Ms. Felton and Ms. New, thank you so much for joining us today, and thank you for sharing the work that you all have been doing. Can you share with the board and with those who are viewing some of the parent feedback that you all have received during this process and some of the adjustments that you all have made at your school in order to accommodate parental concern or feedback?
Sure. Okay, Ms. Felton, you go first.
Most of our feedback has been positive. They have appreciated the board's consistent stance using health metrics, but some of the parents have expressed concern over scheduling. We do tend to have a bit of a lengthy day virtually. Some parents have expressed concern over resource classes and getting their children logged in and out throughout the day, but those concerns we've worked through by maintaining very, very flexible standards and helping children get things done asynchronously and synchronously. We do have some children that struggle to submit online work, and for those children, we have recently started to deliver work packets to their houses so that we can pick them up and they can deliver paper copies of the assignments that have been given to them. So we've just had a lot of grace, a lot of patience, and a lot of collaboration to support our parents, as each concern has been unique at my school, and then each, you know, response has been unique as to what our families need.
And I piggyback with Ms. Felaton. My, my parents have been overwhelmed by the support our teachers have been giving to these students. The afternoon small group sessions have been detrimental and wonderful. These parents will call me and say, "I can't believe I heard him sitting in his room and he was reading his story all by himself." So they're very appreciative, and they know how hard these teachers are working because virtual teaching is hard, and they are very appreciative. They also, they're, they're not shy to call me on my cell or at school and say, "Can you please drop off the packets at the Angel's Place," or wherever their child may be. I'm more than happy. We do a lot of home visits, but that's okay. It's helping them. They're, they're struggling too with all of this. So I mainly feel a lot of appreciation. I think our parents are very appreciative.
Thank you both. Move on to Ms. Camson.
Thank you very much. The voices from the principals that we just heard were extremely impressive, ladies. I was very, very impressed with the work you're doing. I was, your mastery of the use of assessment data was impressive. The implementations you put in place were really great. I was listening to Ms. New and, and the way she had those afternoon groups and targeted groups. I was jealous that I didn't have all those great ideas that you had when I was there. So I'm very excited. It was just, just phenomenal work, and, and your ongoing work with the parents was, was really great. So congratulations to both of you. It was really a nice job. I also wanted to comment on the, the amount and the types of professional development, Dr. Poole, that you are providing for our teachers and schools. It was really very targeted and right on point. I have just a couple of quick questions, and sorry, everyone, about my voice having a little problem. The, the testing is done in the fall. How quickly was the information turned around to the teachers? When they finished the PALS testing, when they finished the STAR testing, were they able to start implementing it at least by second quarter or even earlier? Are we just getting into it?
So the fall testing data, the window went to the 19th of November, and I believe the week after that was Thanksgiving. So it was right after Thanksgiving when teachers had full access to data. So it was during the second quarter, but not at the beginning of the second quarter.
So you'll be starting the PALS testing in another week or so for the mid-year testing?
So. So PALS, the, the testing window is going on right now through the beginning So PALS, the, the testing window is going on right now through the beginning of February. So right at the semester break, we hope to have data ready for our teachers so they can continue to use it and to see, of course, the growth patterns or concerns that we may still have.
Right. So it'll be a much faster turnaround. It's always slow in the fall, I know, because the state doesn't have you start doing it nearly soon enough. With the STAR, and I know we're not doing STAR, but we're just talking about the instructional program. The STAR testing was done in September. I'm assuming that teachers in the classroom were able to start using that right away since that data pops right out of their computer anyway. They don't have to wait around like you do for PALS.
Correct.
Okay. Um, the, I noticed the decline in, in, in the number of children taking the test, which I, is that kind of equal to a decline in attendance?
I think it's a mix of the decline of attendance as well as having to give it virtually. I don't think we're able to reach all of our students. I know the teachers did a yeoman's job of trying to get everybody to test, but without having them face-to-face, you can't just pull them from a class to, to give the assessment. So that was part of the decrease in numbers as well.
Do you think that that impacted the decrease in proficiency that we saw from twenty-two, from nineteen, twenty and to twenty-twenty-one?
I couldn't really answer that for sure, Ms. Campson.
Yeah, okay, that, I guess I can see that. For some reason, I thought the PALS test was all virtual. I did not realize the state had given, I mean, was all, I'm sorry, face-to-face. I knew kids were coming in. The state allowed you to do virtual testing for the kindergarten up?
So the state allowed virtual testing for, for any level, but they left it up to the divisions to decide. So in Norfolk, the decision was to attempt to have any first-time test taker come in. Because as you well know, Ms. Campson, it's, you know, a difficult test to try first online, I would suppose. And then any student who might have had a deficiency gap to come in and take it. However, you know, given where our numbers have been sitting this fall with COVID-19, there were some that just weren't able to come in, and some schools were able to do those face-to-face. So it turned out to be a real mixed bag. But the plan was always for first, second, and the third graders who, who needed to take it to do it online anyway. But the first-time takers really to do it face-to-face, but we didn't quite reach that whole goal.
So did you look at the, if there was a difference between the proficiency rates for virtual students, virtual take, test-taking students as opposed to face-to-face? Did you see a difference in, in the scores and how they performed? Because we know how concerning it is to have to have these tests done virtually to be consistent with the, the way the testing is actually done.
So we haven't dug that deep into the separating the groups, but when we look at the mid-year data, that's one thing we plan to look at.
All right. And would you share that with the board when you, when you get that back?
Sure.
Okay, let's see. I think that's, all right, that sounds good. Thank you very much. And once again, excellent presentation. And principals, you're not yet out of the ballpark. Good job.
Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Mrs. Felton and Mrs. New for being here and sharing your voice from the field. I know you, you all are working very hard, especially our teachers at the school as well. So I have a couple of questions, and Ms. Campson actually asked two, two of them, which I wanted some clarification on, which was about, you know, the virtual versus the in-person and what differences you saw there. And I also had questions about the characteristics of those who completed the test via in, you know, in-person or virtual compared to those that are enrolled but were not able to take the test. So it sounds like, you know, that level maybe can, may be done in the mid-year assessments when, after they're completed. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, we'll work that into the mid-year presentation once we have that data.
Okay, great. The other thing, you know, and I'm glad, Dr. Paul, you said this earlier. There, this was, you know, considered a non-standard because there's nothing standard about this. Even the teaching conditions as well as the learning conditions were, were very different. And, you know, have to, you know, I guess I, I take some of these results with a grain of salt because, you know, for that reason. And I wonder what significant takeaways you and the administration would like the board to, to leave here with today, including some of the correlative factors, you know, that you may have looked at or considered, like absenteeism, like, you know, the conditions, like, you know, because this window was, you know, from October to November, did all of our students have devices? Did our teachers have devices and access to the internet? You know, just if you could speak a little more to that, you know, I'd like to, to hear your thoughts about that.
So I, I do believe when we were doing the testing, our students had devices and, and access as well as our teachers. I agree. I think there's probably the, the difference between the face-to-face versus not and those who were going to be face-to-face but then couldn't be face-to-face. I think just the stress of that alone probably, you know, is something that can play into the results of what we have. Some significant takeaways, though, I think, when we looked at the second grade data where we could, our, we saw, you know, similar numbers of students who needed intervention. I think in, in the data that we shared, you know, the two groups that did seem to not have as much need on STAR intervention were our EL students and our, our Hispanic students. The number a little bit differentiated, but I think that comes to that we had more students take the PALS because it was mandatory. Where we, where the state would made it mandatory, and we tried to get as many to take STAR, but that number was not as high in the subgroups. But I think overall, a takeaway is that we see that, you know, we, we have some, some struggling early readers. And, you know, virtual learning, our teachers are doing everything they can. But, but I think the lip movement and seeing the reading function and learning that way is very important, which is, I think, more difficult to do virtually, but our teachers are doing a bang-up job of everything they can. And, and that's really what we're pulling from this data is the, also the significant, you know, areas that, that we're looking at within each category of the test so teachers know where their students have to grow. And, and the, the teachers are digging into the data. I mean, we're, we're really looking at it. We're sharing it. We're sharing it with principals and working with principals on the data. So, you know, it's making it all the way down to the classroom to ensure that we're focusing on the standards that our students need to, need to learn before they move to the next level.
Okay. And, and as you look at growth, are you also doing some cohort, cohort analysis? Like looking, you know, at our current first graders, looking how they did in kindergarten last year and kind of trying to determine from that angle as well?
Yeah, when I, Ms. Bassin, when I, when I, my team and I look at data, we really do like to look at cohort, not the straight across, but in the diagonal as well, you know, how they do from K to one to two as much as possible. I, I believe in an earlier data presentation, we did some cohort with, with STAR data. I believe we did cohort, and we'll do the same with PALS.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Martin, and thank you, Dr. Paul and team. Managed by fact, lead by data, and I appreciate the information that you all have presented to us as a board here. But I, I do want to ask the question because I'm looking at the timeframe for when we possibly did this testing. And going back kind of along the lines of what my colleague, Ms. Bassin, was asking. I know that we had some, some outages. I mean, of course, we know we're in technology world. Some of our systems were down. Did any of that potentially have maybe some type of effect in delivering these tests virtually or not? It may have had, may have tricked put into some of these results here at all?
I'd have to recall on dates, but I think we wrapped up PALS right before we had any of the major technology issues that we had. The, because we wrapped up by November nineteenth, and I think our, some of the issues we had were following that.
Okay, great. And as far as I know, hearing from the principals, I know that it's kind of been a practice, the best practices to kind of find if something's working. I'm going to see about kind of replicating that. And I know that I heard from principal New that she was able to use some Title I funding. Are we able, I mean, I guess, I know it's up to the principal to make that determination at the individual school level, but are we seeing that type of replication at least across the board to try to provide those types of interventions to support students?
Absolutely.
And if not, it's, no, no, that's no problem. And if not, is that something that we as a board, as we start talking about budget priorities, is that something that we need to probably potentially put on the plate in offering additional support to help going forward?
Absolutely, Mr. Clanton. I think school leadership development has, has done a great job of collaborating with CNI and academic affairs as well as when they're having their cluster meetings, having shared time for principals about what's working, what's not working, so we can share across. I know I've been working with Ms. Malinak and Title I to talk about consistent spending and looking at what's working to make sure that we're, you know, buying like programs so we can support them and, and positions that are, that are working well to make sure we can support them across the division. I, I like that division view more than school-by-school view. I think there needs to be, it, it's important for a principal to be able to have what they need in their specific building, but what's working well needs to be working well across the division. We need to steal those ideas and make sure they become division-wide, and, and we are working on that this year for sure.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan, go ahead. And then Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith, next.
Oh, I'll, I'll yield to Ms. Smith. She can go before me.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Thank you, Dr. Paul. Similar to what Mr. Clanton was saying, what specific outcomes or outputs are we looking for with the next steps? So like when the tests are given again, what is it that we would like to see as a result of these next steps that we're implementing?
Well, I think first and foremost, student growth, you know, in, you know, is, is the, is the key to the strategies that we're implementing. We're also then looking for consistency of the curriculum implementation, especially that new first-grade curriculum that's focused on phonics. And, and CNI members are, are going in and out of classrooms online to assist and, and to make sure that we have some consistency there. The professional development is being put together and, and utilized where we see weakness in the data to make sure that we have offerings to support instruction in those areas. But ultimately, Ms. Smith, I think the, the goal is to make sure that we see growth with our students. And where we still may not see growth at a mid-year, that we focus more on the points where we need to to, to continue to have our students grow through the year.
So is there a certain amount of growth that we're expecting from these next steps?
I, I, I don't know that I could pinpoint a certain amount of growth. But, you know, we're all be looking is, is comparison to the growth that we saw last year and then consideration of where we're in a pandemic. I like trend data a lot, so looking at growth patterns from over the past few years into this year is what I'll be looking for when we have that, that, that next dataset come in.
I was going to ask that question, especially given that we're in a pandemic. But what have you seen in terms of the pattern, let's say, a three- or five-year window? Are we still trending in the same direction? Meaning the pandemic is exacerbating something that has already, a direction that we've already been trending in? Or are we seeing the curve go like this fight?
I, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Smith, and I, I, I don't think the pandemic is exasperating. I think it's reversed us a little bit. But I don't have those direct numbers in front of me right now. I'll make sure that we have those in the mid-year presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Problem.
Thanks, Chair Jordan. Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Tanner, can you go back to the kindergarten identified by subgroup slide? I want to make sure I'm reading the, the chart correctly.
I think it's slide twelve, Ms. Tanner.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see numbers on them. But in any event, while, while that's coming up. So where we have a number of tests and it shows all students, is that row identifying the total number of kindergarten students? Or is it identifying the number of students that were tested or both? Can you clarify that for me?
Sure. So the first column, number of tests, in nineteen, twenty, all students, we tested twenty-four-hundred-and-thirty kindergarteners. And in twenty-twenty-one, we tested nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-two kindergarteners. And then, and then in the actual nineteen-twenty column, four-hundred-and-fourteen of those students were identified as needing assistance, and they all students. And then in the twenty-twenty-one, five-hundred-and-twenty of those students were identified as needing additional assistance.
Right. So the, the twenty-four-thirty and the nineteen-twenty-two is students that we tested. But is that a, the same set as total number of kindergarten students?
So that, that is not the total number of kindergarten students that, that tested. So if you, in the data that was uploaded separately from this, there was a, a data slide that showed that we had ninety-point-three percent of our kindergarteners completed the test this year.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back and look at that. So then my question in response to that is, so what about the students that didn't get tested? What, what can you speak to about what we're doing about those students?
Well, I think the teachers are working on that with them on individual plan and looking at other data points they can until we have the mid-year window that's, that's opened back up. And we're, we're working with teachers on that as well. It's, it's, you know, we look at every data point we have, but if we don't have data points, we, you know, on a specific assessment like PALS for a student, we try to look at our DBA data, or we look at our STAR data, or we look at other data points within the classroom to assure that we're working with students on, on growth constantly.
Okay. And Ms. Tanner, if you can go to the grade one identified by subgroup slide, please.
Mr. Paul, do you remember?
A couple more slides forward.
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Okay, thank you. There we go.
So on this slide, Ms. Bassin mentioned cohorts. So we're not seeing the cohort data as we go forward. But can you just explain to me again, so when we're looking at the percent identified in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and the percent identified in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, I mean, what, what does that tell us in terms of the percent identified by one year to the next?
So I think what it tells us is just our group of first-grade students. That it, it's not following the student in this one, as, as you pointed out, Mr. Jordan, but it tells us that our, our group of first-grade students were last year, you know, we had roughly eighty-three percent of our students who met the, the benchmark and, and showed not needing additional assistance for grade one. Where this year, in grade one, we're seeing twenty-six-point-six percent are identified. So we're down to about seventy-three percent of our students that were successful on this test in first grade. So in first grade alone, it looks like we had a, a drop of knowledge base. And I think what's important, that is to, to bring into the fact that those are our kindergartners last year where they haven't been in school since March, and they're in first grade now. And a lot of times with early reading, we start to see that spring is where the light bulb comes on. And we're seeing this case where that light bulb might not have come on for some of our students, and that that's what the teachers are working on right now.
And then my final question, Principal, excuse me, Principal New mentioned the ninety-eight percent testing and completion rate that they were exceptional in having at, at Ocean View. What's the sense of how other elementary schools in our system compare to, to that number?
Unfortunately, I don't have that data in front of me right now, Mr. Jordan, but I can, I can look that up.
Yeah, I would, I would be interested if it fits with our board process to just get some sense of what the, what it looks like by school and whether or not there are other interventions or techniques that Principal New mentioned that maybe we need to consider as we gear up for, for the additional testing windows coming forward. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Just one quick question, Dr. New, and it kind of flashes back to what Mr. Jordan was talking about. When we talked about our three academically vulnerable groups back in the summertime, at the end of the summer, and one of those groups are our K to three students. Because in as reading specialists, I think we all know, I mean, I know, and I'm sure most of you know, that this is the key time for children to learn how to read. Those children who walk out of the third-grade classroom not performing at grade-level proficiency are the very ones that will struggle on and on and on. Because by that time, as young children, they've internalized a feeling that reading is hard and they're not good at it. And it's very difficult to change that point of view. So my question- So my question, and you may not have a direct answer or something that you can just pop off the top of your head, but this has been my worry this whole year is what's happened, along with, of course, the worry that everyone's seen I've had with these children with disabilities, my concerns about them. But as far as the K to three, and I know I was a third grade teacher that are reading specials for a very long time. And if I couldn't get them out of my room as a third grade teacher at grade level, I worried about them and even monitored them as they went on. And so this is, what are we doing special? Are we doing? Are we gonna? Hopefully, the teachers will be vaccinated in the next couple of months. Are we looking for something in the summer that particularly focuses on this group of children in particular in this reading, especially to turn around any possible negative feelings they have about themselves because of their difficulty learning how to read with a computer monitor? You know, are we doing anything to boost them up and make them have positive ideas? Are we sending home information to parents for things that they can do? For a child that's struggling in reading in these primary grades, it's just a huge, huge concern I have. I know we say, well, kids are everyone across the country is going to be behind, so it isn't like we can look at everyone's behind. But in but for this key group, there may be no fixing for a lot of these children. If it's really hit them hard as first graders or second graders and they're already thinking incorrectly, but still very firmly that they just can't do it. And it's very hard to turn those children around once they go past eight or nine years old. So is there anything in the works or a plan working on or something for that?
Yes, I'm glad you asked, Ms. Campson. We are, of course, teachers are working closely with parents and trying to suggest reading and working with them on that. And we are planning something for the summer much more extensive than what we would traditionally have to make sure that we're working with students of high need or all students who who just want to be in the classroom learning, because hopefully by summer, like you said, the vaccine will be in play and we'll be able to do a little bit more. But we're we are looking at what we can do to have a much more robust program this summer. We started planning on that already.
All right. Thank you very much, because that's something I'm really going to be anxious to see what the mid-year data is going to look like. And we'll get that a lot quicker because we're doing this testing faster. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. We're going to Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Smith.
Yeah, I I would also really would like to see that completion data across the district, you know, what the the range was. Ninety eight percent is great that that Dr. New mentioned, but I would like to see what some of, you know, what it what it looked like across the across the district. The other question I wanted clarification on was on slide twenty three. If Ms. Tanner can go to that slide, it's the grade two PALS identified by subgroup and STAR reading. So my question is, so how would, so for for instance, for the EL subgroup in twenty twenty one, twenty 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 one, seventy three, almost seventy four percent were identified in PALS and forty four percent in STAR. So what a difference like that, what what does that indicate?
Well, I think what I would look at, Ms. Bassin, is if you look, we had fifty three EL students in second grade take the PALS versus thirty five and STAR.
Right.
So I think, you know, when you have a differential of, you know, it was nearly about forty percent of the population more tested, I think we get actually probably a truer number. So I think that makes a higher concern with our L students.
Right, right. So so yeah, I figured that the the number played a role, but I because STAR STAR was done all virtually, right?
Right, and earlier in the year.
And earlier in the year. Okay. Okay, all right. I just wanted some clarification on that. Okay.
Okay, Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Dr. Poe, what have we found to be the cause of the decrease in word recognition and spelling in second grade? So in the number or percentage of students meeting the benchmark?
Ms. Smith, I would think that again comes to the fact that we we had to shutter our schools in March of last year. So we just didn't have the same amount of growth in the spring that we would have naturally had coming into this year. I think that's probably the biggest attribute to that score decrease.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, I don't see my hands. Okay, well, I just want to to echo to Ms. Felton and Ms. New, thank you so much for all you're doing for your for our students and and making sure that those assessments are being implemented, even though, you know, you have to just go through all the avenues you can and also with the distribution of the, you know, whatever resources that they need, even the making home visits. I'm sure you're you're not the only two elementary school principals that are doing this. But I just want to thank you and all of our principals for going that extra mile and being creative and being willing to think on the box to be able to to reach these children. It's just so important. And I know it must mean so much to the children as well. So thank you for your continued efforts and for being here this evening. Thank you, Dr. Poe, for answering our questions and for my colleagues, those really good questions about the assessments. So it's nice to get a good assessment of or a good view of of where we are as far as our PALS and STARS data. And I look forward to the mid-year presentation as well. Okay, we're going to move on now to our academic affairs, the public school instructional plan update.
All right. Good afternoon, again, Chairwoman Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Mr. Jordan, members of the Board, Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this afternoon with Dr. Gibson to provide an update of the instructional plan in place for when students were in person instruction. This afternoon, we'll review the hybrid schedule, the phase in plan metrics, and the iDashboard, webcams, the concurrent teaching, classroom readiness, as well as an update on PP. The approved hybrid plan phases students back to school with A group students and B group students attending two days a week in person and two days a week with live virtual instruction. The only students who will attend four days a week for in-person learning are students with disabilities in self-contained classrooms. Additionally, all virtual scholar academy students will have live virtual instruction four days a week. And all students will have asynchronous learning on Wednesdays. As teachers return to work, they will begin to teach virtually from their classroom in preparation for concurrent teaching that will take place when students return to in-person learning. As seen on this slide, a teacher would have students in House A, approximately half of their in-person learning students face to face, while VSA and House B students would be online concurrently on Mondays and Tuesdays. On Thursdays and Fridays, teachers would have House B students face to face, while House A and VSA students would be learning live through virtual instruction. As voted on by the board, once the two metrics, new cases per one hundred thousand and percent positivity both reach the moderate or yellow range for Norfolk City, the for fourteen consecutive days, Phase One students will be able to return to in-person learning. The first phase would include English learners in levels one, two, and some three, two days a week, and self-contained students with disabilities attending four days a week. Phase two would all would add all students in kindergarten through grade three on the hybrid model. Phase three would add students in grade four and five, as well as pre-case students. Phase four would add all remaining middle school students, and phase five would add all high school students, which would then have all non-VSA students attending school in person. In an effort to make it easier for our community to follow the metrics being monitored, the division added a live dashboard with daily uploads of local metrics. This is part of the iDashboard data and can be found directly on the NPS homepage. The first arrow shows the metric new cases per one hundred thousand. Could you click, please, Ms. Tanner? This first arrow shows the metric new cases per one hundred thousand with the last four, within the last fourteen days in the city of Norfolk. The next arrow shows the visual representation of, I think you'll have to click twice for each one of these, Ms. Tanner. I'm sorry for that. There we go. Thank you. The next arrow shows the visual representation of the average of new cases per one hundred thousand within the last fourteen days in the city of Norfolk. As you can see, there is a green, yellow, orange, and red representation of data as designated by the Center for Disease Control. The next arrow shows the average of percent positive tests within the last fourteen days in the city of Norfolk. And the next arrow shows the visual representation of the percent positive tests within the last fourteen days in Norfolk. This arrow shows the daily indicators the board agreed upon and have been met, that have been met. It may read no for none being met, one for one of the two being met, or two for both being met, depending on the data for the given day. This arrow shows the number of consecutive days that the two indicators have been met. Once both measures are in the yellow or moderate range, it will start to count upward as long as both indicators remain in the moderate range or better. If one of the indicators drops below the moderate or yellow ranges, count will restart. This arrow shows the current date of the data represented in the iDashboard. This one shows the bottom row of the chart, which shows the days the data has been collected. And this one shows the target green line was represents the data when the data hits the yellow range. This line shows the desired target on the specific metric. The blue line is a visual representation of the changing numbers for each metric. And this arrow shows the green target line for percent positive. While this one shows the percent positive metric where it went from yellow to orange. If you hover your mouse over the green or blue line, you get a pop-up box with additional information. Additionally, if you hover your mouse over the green or blue line, you get a pop-up box with more information. Also, if you hover it over either of the two dials, you get the pop-up box with additional information. And this arrow shows the same thing for the second metric. Sorry, we're one ahead, so hang tight before you click again, Ms. Tanner. You get a pop-up box with this additional information. Finally, this arrow that's currently on the screen shows how you can select earlier dates. This is a dropdown menu and can be changed to show historical data all the way back to October first, twenty twenty. Next slide, please. Moving on to how concurrent instruction will be able to take place with the use of webcams. The web camera is placed on the monitor on this photo and can be directed toward the person in front of the computer or toward the focus of instruction. These web cameras have a very wide angle to capture the classroom easily, and they also have built-in microphones to pick up audio. These are not the cameras that automatically move with the teacher. They are stagnant cameras based on how the teacher adjusts them. Here you will see a web camera propped on a book for a different angle. And to show how they can easily be positioned, the USB cord that is used to connect it to the computer is long and allows for the webcam to be positioned and placed within the classroom if needed. Here are two pictures taken from the web camera in an NPS classroom. The camera can be moved around the room during student discussions. Information can be displayed on the front board or even on desks and using the camera. Concurrent teaching is what delivering instruction, simulpeniency for students in person and virtually has been referred to across the nation. Instruction will be different than traditional face-to-face models. Therefore, supports for teachers in this new environment are being provided. A committee including teachers, ITRTs, curriculum coordinators, has been created to focus on concurrent instructional best practices. Professional development for teachers led by curriculum coordinator, ITRTs, have been offered on asynchronous Wednesdays with high levels of teacher participation. Instructional videos and documents have been and continue to be created by ITRTs and curriculum coordinators to support the needs of teachers. There will be videos on discussing proper webcam or use, assisting with classroom setup, illustrating concurrent instructional models based on best practice, providing support in troubleshooting, continuing to provide online resources, and multiple levels of training on campus and Zoom that will continue. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Gibson.
Good afternoon, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, School Board members, and Dr. Birdsong. Our principals have worked hard to ensure we're ready to open. At the beginning of the school year, principals provided health mitigation trainings to teachers and staff, as well as students. In October, each school principal received a preparation guide to use to prepare buildings and classrooms for reopening. Executive directors have visited schools to ensure buildings are ready to open. As we prepare to return to school for in-person learning, health mitigation education for both staff and students will be repeated. We will work with all stakeholders to adhere to the health mitigation strategies. Everyone coming into the building will be expected to wear a mask, wash hands frequently, maintain six feet physical distancing, practice healthy respiratory hygiene, and stay home, of course, if we are sick. Buildings will continue to be sanitized daily. We have enough equipment and supplies to keep schools clean and sanitized. To to support students, next slide, please. To support students, teachers, and parents, our principals have created reopening guides that explain what we should do and expect when we return to school. The elementary and secondary guides contain answers to frequently asked questions. The guide also contains one pages that capture the health mitigation guidelines and can be used as an easy reference for parents. In addition to the guides, some schools have created videos that show students what to do when they arrive to school and how they will move through the building throughout the school day. The guides will be posted on each school's website and provided to families through the school's communication platforms. The guides provide insight on arrival and dismissal procedures, hybrid model schedules for House A and House B, procedures for the classroom, transitions, lunch, large groups, material sharing, resource classes, and restroom research. Next slide, please. Here's a short video from Blair Middle School that shows what students can expect when they arrive to school each morning.
Hello, Blair students, welcome. Hi, I'm Mr. Smith, the eighth grade dean. Upon arrival, please ensure that you are properly wearing your face coverings and masks. Eighth graders, you will be here on the spots where F under the awning. Once inside, if you're eating breakfast, you're going to report directly to the cafeteria, eat your breakfast, clean your area, and wait to be dismissed for electives.
Hello, I am Ms. Thomas, your sixth grade dean. Sixth graders, upon arriving, you will enter through these doors here, pick up your breakfast from your commons, and then head directly to your class to eat your breakfast.
I'm Mr. Hill, seventh grade dean. Upon arrival, seventh grade will enter here, go up the stairwell, grab your breakfast from the commons, and go to your class and eat breakfast.
All schools have received two shipments of supplies and have enough supplies on hand for use. The warehouse also have enough supplies to last through April. More supplies will be ordered to replenish inventories in the warehouse and schools, and schools will receive additional supplies when requested. In December and throughout January, the Learning Support Department received materials to specifically support special education self-contained classrooms. Materials and equipment delivered to schools included sanitizing wipes, hand sanitizer, disposable gowns, thermometers, gloves, masks, goggles, adult surgical masks, children's surgical masks, youth cloth masks, youth face shields, and face shields for teachers. At this time, our principals and staff are ready to receive our children when it's time to return to school. We are available for questions at this time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. I'm sure there's a lot of parents and students are ready to go back to school whenever that time comes around, too. So I'd like to start with Ms. Campson, the only other hand I see.
Just a quick question. Dr. Poe, first of all, thank you. I always have I've learned just this year that if I have a question on one meeting, you have, you addressed it at the next meeting, and I really appreciate that. I did ask about the web cameras. I had a concern about them being stationary. And I asked, first of all, first question, do all classrooms now have at least one?
Every classroom that will have concurrent instruction, we have them for them, yes.
And they don't have to be installed. They're just plugged in. Okay, so that's that's solved, right? All right. My other question is the fact, still the same concern I had when I asked the question first, is the fact that they are stationary. And so, yes, you can move them around during the lesson of instruction, but having been a teacher myself, that's not easy. You're involved in the instruction. You're running around trying to place the camera because you need to have it on whatever you're doing because you've got virtual students watching. And they have to be able to see the same thing that the in-class children do. So I still have concerns. I don't know what the solution is. Not my job to figure it out anyway, but I am just saying that I'm still concerned about the fact that they're stationary. I, for some reason, in my mind, when we talked about the cameras, thought that they were going to follow the the voice of whoever was talking, which was thought that they were going to follow the voice of whoever was talking, which was most often the teacher until they started doing the exchange. So I'm not sure how that's going to work for teachers. I'll be interested to see once we get our classrooms going again, the sooner the better, I hope. But it just seems to me like it would, and maybe my mind's not, you know, is as good at doing all these extra things at the same time, but the thought of having to have that in my mind, moving it, moving it, moving it here, it would really break the rhythm of my instruction. And I think it would be lesser than it should be. So I don't know if we move forward, if maybe as we start buying some replacement stuff or we need extra stuff. If we could try, I mean, maybe the price is really prohibitive, but I would really like to see the difference for teachers if they have something they can place, and it does its own movement, not the teacher. Thank you very much.
Dr. Paul, did you respond to that at all?
I will say that we did price out the cameras that move, and they are pretty restrictive on price. And the CARES Act specifically said that you couldn't use funding for the swivel type camera, but that you could use it for the stationary one because of the costs of them, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Interesting. Ms. Basim, go ahead with your question.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. I have just a few questions. Since we last received the, an update on this, have there been any changes in regards to staffing, transportation, even, you know, with our custodians you know, that that may present challenges for, you know, for return to school?
We continue to have the same challenges that we shared with you previously. As I stated before, certainly, like all of you, we will be excited to receive our children. And we have surveyed our teachers about their return, but until that specific date has been established. Again, we do think that while overwhelmingly our teachers said that they would return, I think based upon just even the last several weeks, that for whatever reasons, teachers may change their mind. And I think, again, whenever we determine what that date is, when our metrics allow us to go back in accordance to what we've established and talked about during the last meeting, we won't know until that time. And over the past several years, we've always expressed concerns about bus drivers and vacancies. And that's a national concern, a regional concern, and even a local concern, and I'm sure you're aware of that. And just having to ensure social distancing on school buses and just making sure you have the bus drivers that you need to drive the buses. Again, that continues to be a concern, but we're ready to go, and we're going to do the very best that we can do. And we will certainly keep the board updated on any other concerns that we might have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. The other, so I'm just kind of going through. So now with the concurrent teaching, you know, I had similar concerns to Ms. Campson, not so much with the camera itself, but as you know, I've raised this issue before about the burden on our teachers and having to do, you know, in-person and virtual teaching and learning at the same time. And I can imagine that, you know, trying to monitor the chat box and provide real-time feedback for students could be cumbersome. Is there additional staffing support or changes to the teacher-student ratio that's being considered to help support the teacher? Or volunteers, like could parent volunteers help the teacher also?
I think during the pandemic, we need to be very careful about bringing in. Certainly, we love our volunteers and we're glad that Mrs. Matthews is here and helping to support our community engagement needs. But I think at this time, I think we do need to limit outsiders from coming into the building. And so our principals have been, you know, under Dr. Gibson's leadership, having these discussions, talking about concurrent teaching. No, it is not the ideal situation, but it can work. It's working in some other school divisions, and while superintendents have, you know, expressed that it's not ideal, it's what we're facing right now, and so we're going to make the very best of it. And our teachers, again, I say this time and time again, we have the best teachers ever. Our teachers are very skilled, they're very flexible, and they love our children. So they're going to do whatever it takes to make sure that our kids get what they need.
Right. And I wholeheartedly second that, which is why, you know, you know, I've been hearing concerns as we're hearing across the nation about teacher burnout and very real. And, you know, I just, you know, want to consider, you know, how can, what can we do to relieve some of that stress? And I get it, there may
And Mrs. Basim.
That we can do.
Additional staff and again, you know, with recruitment, that we just discussed the challenges, the challenges of that. And we'd like an opportunity to implement our plan as we've developed. And we feel confident that, you know, we'll be able to meet our children's needs. And if we need to make changes, we're certainly flexible as we've been all year. And we'll do whatever we need to do to make mid-course changes to our program.
Okay, all right. Let me see. So with the phase-in plan too, I know I don't want to get into the discussion, but just somewhere, just to kind of, you know, put in the parking lot, you know, we, as I revisited the reopening plan that, you know, was put forward at the beginning of the year, particularly around our students of equity and opportunity that went beyond just those three, you know, the nationally recognized groups. You know, we may talk about this because I believe there's other academic data that will be shared later. But, you know, our students that, you know, may be failing to enroll classes or may not have shown up at all during this school year, you know, the consideration to include them somewhere in the phases is something that, you know, I would like to have future discussion around and consideration at some point. And, you know, we could talk about that at another time, but when I see the phase in, you know, I just want to put that out there as something to consider. So next with, and this is probably for Dr. Gibson, about the mitigation strategies. I'm glad to hear that we have supply through April. That's, that's good news. And hopefully, you know, with a new administration coming in and everything, we hopefully will have more supplies to make it through the end of the year.
Federal administration, we want to make sure that's clear. We're talking about federal government, right?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. So, you know, I guess it's related to, you know, there's, there's a lot of, you know, community concern about, you know, cases among students and about, and among staff and how they would know, you know, what is happening in our school buildings. And I would like for there to be some consideration. The dashboard on the health metrics that we have put up is great. And I'm really happy to see that it's well done. And, you know, I would like to see something perhaps be considered or researched about how we might be able to do that that would demonstrate our building readiness or as well as that might indicate, you know, cases among students and among staff so that we could, you know, transparently, you know, kind of monitor the status of the health of our students and staff going forward. So it's just a consideration that I'm putting out there for you. And there's, there are several good examples that other school districts have done, some of which, you know, I could, I could share with you all if you're interested in doing something like that. And I don't know if there's board support to even, you know, consider that. But I hope that, you know, I can, I can share some examples and that we could take it from there. But, you know, I would like some board support to establish that going forward. So, okay.
All right, that's it? Or did you have more?
Well, and I wonder, I'm not sure where this comes in, but with the instructional plan, you know, we talked about mitigation strategies, and I know the question on everybody's mind is the vaccination effort. And you may have an update on that later. But, you know, I just wanted to ask the question if we do have a vaccination update and what that might look like.
And I'm happy to respond to that if that's okay, because I know that's the question on everyone's minds right now. And so, as you know, we have ongoing collaboration with Dr. Lindsay and her staff. And so they are working very, very hard to make sure that all of the priority groups are being vaccinated or receiving the vaccination. And as you know, there are three, well, actually four major groups, Group A, Group B, Group C, and then there's the general population. Well, the K-12 staff of Norfolk Public Schools would be in Group 1B. And I think there are eight different, eight different subgroups within 1B, and we're number three. Number one would include police, fire, and hazmat. Number two, corrections and homeless shelter workers. Number three, childcare, K-12 teachers and staff. Four, food and ag. Five, manufacturing. Six, grocery store workers. Seven, public transit, transit workers, and then eight mail carriers. And so right now Norfolk has not transitioned into 1B yet. So we're still in 1A right now. And so I don't think we will even get started into the 1B phase until perhaps the end of January. And again, I know they are closely following their, you know, priority protocol. It's not that people are jumping line or anything like that. They're strictly following the protocol. And of course, like any other locality, there's been some challenges. And so they're working very, very carefully, cautiously, and expeditiously through those challenges. And they have a great solid plan. And so we, as a school division, have to provide data to the VDH. And we are at the point now, we're collecting data from staff, we're getting all of that information together. That information will be uploaded. And so after that data, after the data are uploaded, individuals, staff members who have decided that they are interested in being vaccinated, they will get an email, and I think that email comes directly from the CDC. And then they will be able to choose their location where they want to have the vaccine. And so that's where we are now. And again, we have ongoing conversations, collaboration with Dr. Lindsay and her staff. And she's keeping us posted every step of the way. And we're working feverishly right now to provide the VDH, the data that they need so that our, our staff members can get vaccinated. And that would include K-12, that would include everyone that works for the school division. And certainly, within, within our scheduling process, we're able to define priority groups even within our school division. And so we will certainly do that as well. I hope that provides you the update that you need.
Yeah, no, thank you very much for that update. And just one additional question related to that. Has, have we done any kind of intent to vaccinate kind of survey of our staff just to kind of figure out where we might need to target?
Yes, that's a great question. That's a part of data gathering. Dr. Phillips, I'm giving him another degree of his several degrees and certifications. Mr. Phillips will be administering that survey. So yes, all staff will need to respond to the survey that we, that we send out.
Okay.
So that's a part of the process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Birdsong, you said childcare and K through 12. Where do the pre-K teachers fit into that?
Well, they're part of the, you know, if you look at the literature from the VDH, it says K-12. But that includes our pre-K staff and students.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions about the instructional plan? Ms. Simpson, go ahead.
Yes, I had kind of a clarifying question. So the plan would be that all students on the same day are receiving the same instruction, whether they're in Group A or Group B. So there would be the same lesson in person and online. And then with that, what is, you know, wrong with students receiving the same instruction in person and then the same instruction online? I think that would combat some of the issues with, you know, having some students in the classroom and also having to worry about students in the online forum, I guess. I just, I see that working better as opposed to, you know, teachers having to deal with the chatroom and things that were brought up by Ms. Basim instead of having Group A in the classroom days, Monday and Tuesday, doing the same assignments, I guess, as they would be doing in person for Group B on Thursday and Friday. And then with that, those groups would be doing the same lessons online.
Okay, I'll speak to that. You're still going to get instruction two days a week from each teacher. The curriculum is going to continue to progress. So the day that you're in class will be one day of your instruction. But the day when you're on asynchronous learning, the curriculum will be advancing. So you will need to tune in each day so that you can see the curriculum progress through the year. The teacher will need to adjust her time with the people in person where she's working with them, and then her time when she's working with the people who are asynchronous in terms of providing them with support. But it will be a day where you are watching the instruction online. And then the next day, you will be actually in the room with the teacher. So the curriculum will continue to progress. If you miss a day, you're going to miss instruction you haven't seen before. If you're in class, you will be working in person with the teacher. If you're online, the teacher will have activities that are appropriate for you to complete online. So she will have to, which is why we were saying concurrent teaching can be very challenging because the teacher will have to figure out how to switch those platforms and how to meet the needs of the online learners as well as the in-person.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. Does that help you understand Ms. Simpson?
Yes, it helps me understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clanton?
Just following up on that one for, along the same question there from what I hear from Dr. Gibson. So essentially, are teachers now being required to, I guess, produce two lesson plans for that particular instruction? Because, I mean, that's kind of what I'm hearing, but if you can clarify that for me.
Okay, it's not necessarily two lesson plans. When you get to the release, the gradual release of the work, when you get past the guided practice and the direct instruction, and you get into the independent activities, the teacher will be required to have different kinds of activities in terms of being able to release to the students. Because while she has the students in person, she may want to do groups with them in person. But the children who are asynchronous, then unless she puts them in front of a computer and in a group with other children, then she will need to have activities for them to do independently. She may be able to have them zoom into break rooms and put there, and that way the children who are in person, they can see them in a break room if they're in group two and continue working together. Or she may have something where the asynchronous children work independently. But that will be up to the autonomy of the teacher and how able she is in terms of being able to maneuver and make her groups or her independent work actually function to the advantage of learning. And Dr. Stallings may want to speak to that as well because she's actually been in the virtual classrooms this school year, and she's seen the instruction. So she might be able to kind of give you a better picture of what that answer could look like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. Ms. Stallings, would you like to speak?
So good evening, everyone. So, Mr. Clanton, you're asking what will it look like when the students come back in a hybrid model where when the students come back in a hybrid model where the students are online and the teachers are actually teaching?
Yeah, so what I what I was hearing, like, I I know you have a lesson plan, but Dr. Gibson did kind of explain it for me. So you know, you're giving the core instruction, you know, all the students are there, but then you can kind of define the activities to support the instruction that you just delivered based on what um where the students are, whether they're out there virtual or in classroom. Is that that what I'm hearing?
Well, yes. And and when the students begin to work or when the teacher ends her direct instruction and they go to the gra gradual release, those students who are virtual may be working on something different than the students who are in the face-to-face instruction. Um so the teacher would just come up with modified activities for those students who are virtual. So when the day flips, that teacher may take those activities that that student worked on virtual and expound upon them um when they're in the class face-to-face. Those students who were in the class face-to-face, when they are virtual that next day, they've already had that direct instruction face-to-face with the teacher. So they're able to complete those activities in the virtual instru virtual setting, because they've already received that instruction.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Stallings. Okay, we're gonna um move on to the next agenda item. We have monitoring and accountability of student performance and voices from the field. Dr. Birdsong?
Thank you, um Dr. Martin. And so um with this presentation, which we're very excited about, Dr. Poel is going to to start um the presentation by reviewing um the some of the or the variety of data that we have been monitoring and analyzing um since the beginning of the school year to just kind of remind you of where we are, to inform you and remind you of 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 where we are. Because some of these assessments we um provided you um with information during previous board meetings. And then Dr. Gibson will tell you a little bit more about the accountability piece, um what that looks like at the central level, what it looks like at the building level, and the tool that we are actually um utilizing this year so that we can know and have an understanding of where all of our children, um how they are performing this school year. And then we have a voice from the field, uh the proud principal uh of Booker T. Washington High School, Dr. Margie Stallins, will provide some information from the field, how she's utilizing the tool and all of the wonderful things that she's doing to um help children move along during this pandemic, provide for their academic needs, and also uh filling in the gaps for those students who need additional support and academic assistance. So without further ado, Dr. Poel.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good afternoon again, everybody. Chairwoman, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this afternoon with Dr. Gibson and then Dr. Stallings to present on how Norfolk Public Schools is monitoring student data and staying accountable for student performance from the division to the school level. This presentation will focus on data points where we will share the balanced assessment approach, general data being reviewed as well as an overview of some of the data. Then Dr. Gibson will share how the division is responding to the data. And the presentation will end with a voice from the field, Dr. Margie Stallings, the proud principal of Booker T. Washington. Although the focus in Norfolk Public Schools has been around balanced approach with assessments and data, this year, in the midst of a pandemic, a focus on multiple multiple data points centered on standards is vital to understand where students are succeeding and where they need additional assistance. Focusing on standards and each student's comprehension of those standards is the best way to determine what our students' needs are. The use of a national assessment such as Renaissance STAR allows us to see a comparison of learning from last year to this year focused on the standards. Using statewide assessments such as VKRP and PALS gives us more perspective with normalized data on a state level. Moving then to division-wide data such as the division benchmark assessments and then the building level assessments, cognitive formative assessments, daily formative and performance assessments to give teachers further data on student understanding of standards. Additional points of data reviewed at both the division and building level are attendance and grades. It's difficult to gain an understanding of a student's comprehension of standards by looking at grades alone if they're missing assignments. By comparing attendance with grades, schools and teachers are able to focus on student engagement. Those students who are attending class and are not submitting work may have an understanding of the information. However, they're not fully engaged in submitting the work to show teachers their full understanding. Principals are also working with teachers and staff to ensure parents are being contacted to increase student engagement. As presented in November, the STAR data is on this slide represents a comparison from last year to this year for a grade level for reading. This represents a national data set that we use in Norfolk Public Schools. Here is the STAR math data presented in November. The winter testing window began in December and goes until February, mid-February, which will allow for a comparison of data to see where students have grown since we started this school year. For our early readers, as just presented, the PALS kindergarten data shows a high number of our students as identifying needing additional assist assistance. For our early readers, just as presented a few moments ago, the PALS first grade data also shows the same um grow or growth in the needs identified column. For our early readers, um the PALS second grade data continues to show a higher number of our students as identified as needing additional assistance. And as said earlier, the PALS winter testing window is currently open and closes in early February. Although there are no longer formal DBA reports to the board, we wanted to share another piece of data principals and teachers are using that are standards-based. This slide shows the comparison of overall scores by subject and grade level band. For English, there was an increase in students meeting the benchmark, while there was a decrease in both elementary and middle school, or high school English, rather, there was an increase. Math saw decreases in meeting the benchmarks at all levels. This slide shows the in elementary English DBA data by gap group. The gap group with the largest growth in not meeting the benchmark is the black group with eight point nine percent more students failing or falling to the score range. The two following student groups are students with disabilities and EL students. Here is the middle school English DBA data. Again, the black group saw the largest decrease in scores in with a fourteen point five percent more students falling into the did not meet benchmark range. Here's the high school DBA for English. This data shows in the white gap group had the greatest fall in scores with an increase of four point eight percent of the students that did not meet the range, closely followed by the multi-race gap group at four point six percent. Here, students in the following gap group showed an increase in meeting the benchmark, Asian, Black, Hispanic, English learners, multiracial, students with disabilities, and white students. So we saw less students in the needs improvement category, and we did see growth in the meets on this assessment. Moving to elementary math DBA, multiracial students saw the largest drop with twelve point eight percent more students in the did not meet range, followed by black students with an increase of nine point eight percent more students in the did not meet range. The middle school math DBA data shows the largest percentage of students moving to the did not meet range was the black group with an increase of seventeen point five percent in this range. The gap group was followed by the multiracial group with an increase of thirteen point two percent. Finally, the high school math DBA showed multiracial students had the largest movement in the did not meet range with an increase of fifteen point four percent, followed by EL students with an increase of fourteen point one percent. I'll now turn the presentation over to Dr. Gibson, who will review how the division, schools, and teachers are responding to standard space data.
Thank you, Dr. Poel. Good evening again, everyone. Work of the school principals is guided by the school improvement plan, which focuses on maintaining and or achieving accreditation based on state and federal accreditation standards. Current status for all schools is accreditation waived due to the pandemic. However, we are all mindful of our goal to have all schools accredited by twenty twenty four. Each essential action in the school improvement plan has goals and strategies that have been determined based on data analysis, plans to monitor and document implementation of the strategies, and a timeline for completing tasks. The school improvement guides are work at the school level. It is to ensure that we are monitoring our progress and working to improve student achievement while closing gaps in all subgroups. Schools are focused on ensuring students demonstrate measurable growth in English and writing, math, science, and history. Goals for improvement in each of these areas are listed in the school improvement plan. The written, taught, and tested curriculum will be implemented with fidelity while integrating social emotional learning into daily instruction. Each school's plan addresses intentional efforts to provide professional development to staff to support students and families through family engagement and P B I X, to engage the community at large in supporting our schools, and to monitor efforts and progress on an ongoing basis so that our resources can be best used to gain incremental growth in student achievement that results in all schools being accredited by twenty twenty four. Please be mindful that we have framed our multi-year plan from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty two for now, because we have to bring students through a pandemic. And we are also progressing through new curriculum as we reach back to last year and move forward through this year. Each school is focused on the Drive for Five, which focuses on working to improve students' academic performance while integrating social emotional learning into daily instruction, attracting and retaining highly qualified, effective teachers to teach our students, being more purposeful and strategic in developing and sustaining effective partnerships with our families and other community stakeholders, and being more intentional in our efforts to foster a division-wide culture of caring. Drive for Five also content contains a goal of improving our infrastructure, but we tonight are focusing on our academic improvements. These goals are clearly aligned to the school board's goals and priorities to reach full accreditation for all schools. Next slide, please. Our school improvement plans monitor progress to show how each student is progressing. Principals complete quarterly data monitoring tools that utilize eight framing questions and has tabs to enter academic data and academic interventions, student engagement data and interventions, and graduation data and interventions. For each core subject, data is disaggregated by subgroup down to the individual student. The spreadsheet shows which students are in Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. Tier Two and Tier Three students' numbers and percentages are placed in the monitoring tool. Data posted on the tool includes students' pre-assessment scores from the beginning of the year, their STAR data, their DBA data, and their common formative assessment data. Students are also identified by tiers two and three for course pass rates. The very last column of the academic data field lists post-test as well as S O L scores. The tab in the data monitoring tool for Tier Two and Tier Three lists academic interventions by subject, the four core subjects that will be implemented to help students reach proficiency levels. Principals, instructional leadership teams, and teachers meet bi-weekly to review student progress and to determine next steps for students who are receiving interventions in academics and engagement. We engage our students by focusing on ways to improve their attendance as well as their discipline and submission of work. Discipline tracking also captures the three most prevalent offenses in the school so that the P B I S team can plan and support accordingly. High schools also complete the college career and civics readiness indicator and a graduation tab where seniors are monitored to make sure that they are on track to graduate. The graduation tab also includes a dropout rate so that we can monitor the cohort in an effort to reduce this number. As we work year-round to provide support to students, every principal has completed the data monitoring tool for quarter one and also received and reviewed interim two grade for grade reports as part of the monitoring and support services process. The executive directors and I have reviewed the school improvement plans as well as the data monitoring tool, and we provided feedback to our principals on what they are reporting and listened to ways where we can share and collaborate to help students improve. The executive directors have begun meeting with principals in January individually to provide support and follow-up and working to help all students. Next slide, please. Here is a snippet of the template of the monitoring tool, which shows how a subject is tracked for all students. Subsequent columns on this tab also capture students' progress by subject in every subgroup. At the bottom of the, at the bottom of the spreadsheet, you see a pink, a yellow, a lavender, a light blue, and a medium blue tab. These tabs represent quarterly data, interventions for academics, also the frame the framing questions for each quarter that principals answer as they complete the monitoring tool. Principals post the quarterly assessment data, the grades for the course, and students in Tier Two and Tier Three. And the academic interventions tab, principals post strategies to be used to support students in tiers two and three. And the student engagement tab, data and intervention tabs are also interventions are also posted for engagement, attendance, and discipline. Again, high schools post their data across the high school grade levels in terms of college, career, and civic readiness, and they also post their dropout rate and the progress of the cohort. Next slide, please. In this snippet of the template for the monitoring tool, this is a piece for academic inventions for the subject of reading from, and you can see here that the number and percentages of Tier Two and Tier Three students along with interventions that are being implemented to support these students. The use of the tool will continue throughout the year, and and the format of the tool will allow principals to see their data in all in one place at a glance. At this time, I will share some of the interventions and support schools are implementing to improve attendance, student achievement, and student engagement. I will begin with the services academic affairs is providing to our schools on an ongoing basis. Next slide, please. Beginning in August twenty twenty and each month thereafter, all principals and their instructional leadership teams have received monthly professional development that is focused on the Drive for Five. Professional development sessions focused on our four essential actions from the school's accountability plans. Sessions focused on instructional leadership as it pertains to support and to supporting teachers and planning for and in delivering instruction in the inclusion setting. Elected subject division-level coordinators presented best practices in their respective disciplines at the beginning of the school year. Principals also participated in sessions facilitated by the directors and coordinators of assessment, research, and accountability, gifted learners, English learners, and student support service. In addition to the division-level professional development for principals and their instructional leadership teams, our Level Three schools receive professional development at the building level that focuses on the essential actions in the school improvement plans. And the coordinators and teacher specialists from academic affairs meet with teaching teams, observe instruction, and provide coaching and feedback to support the teachers. Support is also provided to every school principal who requests support. As principals complete their quarterly monitoring tool, they also list requested support and receive support from academic affairs, student support services, and assessment research and accountability. As support and lesson planning, instructional delivery, and assessment development are provided, teachers are better able to provide Tier One instruction and blend in Tier Two and Tier Three intervention strategies. Principals are also providing time each month during our professional development days to work on developing their comprehensive needs assessments. The efforts of our academic affairs are documented through a division-level log where senior coordinators and teacher specialists document their support that they are providing each month to our schools. Beginning in January, as we continue our di our monthly professional development, we will focus on curriculum alignment and recovery efforts to decrease student failures and to increase student engagement as we continue to provide professional development sessions from now through the end of the school year. Special education coordinators and teacher specialists have supported principals in reviewing PALS reports. The Department of Assessment, Research, and Accountability have provided professional development on using STAR and SchoolNet for assessments and data analysis. Schools use SchoolNet for teacher-made assessments and DBA testing. Analysis from STAR and SchoolNet, analysis reports from STAR and SchoolNet are used in team planning to determine what students did well and what students need to be re-taught. Instructional technology resource teachers have supported teachers and administrators throughout the school division in developing proficiency and using Canvas, Zoom, and in preparing lessons that include videos and modules. As we plan to return to school, training for use of cameras and concurrent teaching will also be completed in time for school to reopen. In terms of our academic interventions at the school level, we are implementing before and after-school remediation by subject area. Schools also provide small group instruction during the day, focused remediation sessions by retired teachers, teacher-assigned practice on computer-based instructional programs, amnesty weekends for remediation and catch-up, providing take lessons to be viewed to be viewed outside of class time, and they are still accepting late work without penalty. Some of our Tier Three interventions include providing individual instruction, having teams of teachers and counselors reach out to students and families through call centers to ensure work is being submitted, having staff provide tutoring sessions with parent permission over the weekend and holidays to support students in completing their work. Having staff provide tutoring sessions with parent permission over the weekend and holidays to support students in completing their work. As we work to improve student engagement, we realize that we have to have our attendance interventions in place. And we are following the flexibility of the attendance policy provided by the VDOE guidelines. We're holding parent conferences through teacher and counselor call centers. We're providing Zoom check-ins and immediately, and immediate calls home for students who don't sign into class. We're also using incentives to be in school and to be engaged in the Zoom lessons. We have also incorporated attendance contracts. Our tier-three interventions in terms of attendance, we have behavior specialists sitting in on classes to make sure students are not just present. But they are also working. Our administrators are conducting home visits. We also have individual conferences and support from school counselors and attendance technicians. As a last means of efforts, we are also working and looking at incorporating the truancy reporting policy. And working with our attendance technicians and student support services to get our students engaged and in class. Our student engagement interventions in terms of our social emotional learning opportunities are ongoing. Social emotional learning is embedded into our daily teaching and in all of our classes throughout the day. Our social emotional learning is intentional. Schools are putting forth the effort to make virtual school fun. And they are inviting parents and students to do a variety of things to make school engaging. Schools are hosting Spirit Week, Student of the Week, morning meetings, family engagement activities, Parent of the Week. Bookmobile time, library checkout time, and morning and afternoon announcements. Schools have also provided mental health referrals through the school's social worker for students and families whose challenges. Can be supported by the school. If they cannot be supported by the school, then schools are providing services through community outreach. Schools have also hosted extracurricular activities and they are holding them virtually. Mentor programs, book clubs, and other organizations are meeting online. Schools are hosting monthly meetings with parents to share attendance and academic expectations. Administrators and staff are also using email, Google Classroom, Class Dojo, newsletters. Websites, home visits, bus rides into neighborhoods, knocks on doors. And whatever else we can think of to get students engaged and working. Staff members keep logs of contacts as well as attempts made to reach parents. Attendance letters, attendance agreements, conferences, check-ins. Whatever we can do to engage our parents, including our parent liaison, completing home visits. We are doing to ensure that our children have opportunity and they can be successful. This evening, we've shared our efforts across the school division. We've asked a voice from the field to take a moment to provide her school's work in guiding our students to succeed. At this time, Dr. Margie Stallings, the proud principal of Booker T. Washington High School. Will share firsthand how Booker T. Washington is working to engage students and help them. Dr. Stallings?
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. And good evening again, Dr. Martin, school board chair, Mr. Jordan, vice chair, Dr. Birdsong, our superintendent. And school board members. As already shared, I am Dr. Margie Stallings, the proud principal at Booker T. Washington High School, home of the mighty Booker's. On this evening, I will be sharing with you some of the activities that we have implemented. To continually engage our students and parents during this pandemic and virtual classroom learning. We remained in contact with our families from the closing of school and throughout the summer. Our plans for family and student engagement began with the meet and greets for our incoming ninth graders and their families. We scheduled approximately ten sessions to meet with our incoming freshmen. And to answer any questions they may have about high school. Later that month, we scheduled a two-day ninth-grade orientation. The first day was a virtual orientation and the second day consisted of a drive-through orientation. We had about a hundred and twenty freshmen drive through. And I was there proudly greeting every car to welcome our new families to Booker T. Washington High School. To further connect with and engage our students. We have scheduled monthly grade-level meetings on asynchronous Wednesdays. Which are led by our administrators based on their grade level. The school's website has been revised to include a student section to allow our students. Access to information as needed. Our clubs and organizations' calendar has been posted to our website. To support the social, emotional learning for our students and they meet monthly. Our school counselors sponsor virtually, virtual monthly programs for our students. And they have also created a remind app as another tool of communication for our student engagement. To support our students academically and increase student outcomes. We have created a virtual after-school study hall, which convenes during the week and on Saturdays if requested. We also provide a virtual after-school academic support for our students as needed. During the winter break, we offered a homework hotline for any student who needed academic support and chose to work during that time. For those students who may not be logging on to their classes. We have created a student-focused team who contacts the students and parents about attendance. In addition, we meet monthly with our content teams to discuss the data from common formative assessments. The STAR assessments and the district benchmark assessments to monitor student progress. Students who are in need of supports and interventions are identified and placed in or offered the supports. We monitor the effectiveness of the supports based on student performance outcome trends. We hold weekly conversations about our students in our focus group team meeting. And we discuss the next steps, the contact updates, and student progression. Additionally, we have created a spreadsheet of all of our students who attend Booker T. Washington High School. To include their attendance, interim grades, assessment, assessment performance. And the tiering of these students, which allow us to focus on the students and the greatest need of supports. This spreadsheet is used along with the data monitoring tool to allow us to focus on all of our students. We do note that we do have students who are doing well academically. And we have created plans to recognize them to keep them on track for success. To support our parents, we have implemented the following. A monthly fireside chat with the principal for parents to discuss any issues or concerns. And for me to provide any updates to our parents. We've created an Ask BTW email to streamline communications with students and parents. We've also updated the school's website to include a parent section to allow our parents a portal. For assessing information. The parent weekly email is sent out on Fridays with any updated information. I have the weekly principal robocall that goes out on Sunday evenings. And we make phone calls directly to our parents. Additionally, the school's Instagram page and Twitter account are both used to communicate with. And engage our students and parents. In August, we had our first virtual open house and we have a second one planned for February. As we are working to increase our student engagement. We continually seek out-of-the-box ideas to connect with our students to keep them focused and engaged. While we do not have all of the answers to ensure that all of our students remain engaged, we will not be discouraged. Our number-one priority is our students and we are committed to the work of teaching and learning. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the good things that we're doing at Booker T. Washington High School. To engage both our students and parents. Our journey has been challenging but rewarding at the same time. At this time, I return the presentation to Dr. Poehl.
Thank you to both Dr. Gibson and Dr. Stallings for sharing all of us being done to meet the needs of our students. At this time, we stand ready for any questions or comments the board may have.
Sure. Any questions, comments? Ms. Camson and then Mr. Clanton and Ms. Bessine and Dr. Gabriel.
Just one quick question. First, thanking our principal again, coming in, what a great presentation. This is. No offense to everyone else, but my favorite part is hearing what's happening in the schools and it's just mind-blowing. Just one quick question for Dr. Gibson. Dr. Gibson, on the chart where you were tracking the scores across the way. Can't recall what you called it. But on that chart, are you doing that by individual students? Are you doing it by class or by grade?
The principal starts out by looking at all of the grades in the school. All of the children who are in tier one, they're placed in one group. The children in tier two, they're listed as a number on the chart. And the children in tier three are also listed as a number. Those children are pulled into a group where the principal pulls a roster. She can see which teachers and which classes have these children. She can meet with the instructional team by grade level as well as by subject. To begin to determine what interventions need to be implemented for those students. So when they pull the numbers, they get an E-report from Synergy, they can see what every child's. Every child with an E-report who is tier three. Those who, so yes, they know exactly who every child is once they make that tier-two and tier-three group.
So, so you're tracking their performance on every assessment for the whole year by child?
By child, yes, ma'am.
And then if I wanted to, as a principal, I could go in and pull up the class?
Yes.
So we can, and so do you then do a summary tracking chart by class so that you have a student one? A class one, a grade level one as it goes up? So however deep you want to get into it, you could, you know, just see what they're doing by grade or by class. Or if you wanted to have individual students tracked, it's set up like that?
Yes, the principal can disaggregate that data like that. And also, the principal can go to SchoolNet and start and print the individual results for each child to show where that child is by standard. The SchoolNet assessments allow the principal and the teacher to actually see the standard performance and proficiency by standard. As well as the item analysis for each test. So as they work in teams, or they work individually for a student. They can do a prescriptive plan of support for an individual student or for small groups.
So, and that's excellent. I mean, I'm super impressed by that because, because assessment data is there. For two reasons, and the first reason is to identify students that need support and exactly where they need it. Then a quick follow-up then is, do then. The executives, executive directors then look at it by school so that. There, in other words, we're hope, we've got the assessment data to guide our instruction, to help us with planning and delivery. Now, we go to the second reason we have the assessment, which is results. And, and that's the accountability piece. So are they, is, so are the classroom teachers accountable for how that data goes? Progressing, are the principals accountable, are the executive directors accountable? And it's a way to pull it up and look at it by each of those groups too. Would it be something you would include, for example, in their evaluation?
When we look at our school improvement plan, the school has a school-wide incremental goal. Where they're trying to improve the overall performance on the SOL test by a certain percentage. When you go to the principal's goals, those goals are written directly into that principal's goal setting for the year. When you get to the teacher, the teacher is trying to show growth by a year for each student. So where that student is, the students are placed in bands. And based on what band they're in, they're trying to get them to improve a certain percentage. With the ultimate goal being to meet state and federal accreditation markings. So we are able to look at the school, the school-wide performance, and look at it by teacher performance. And then look at it by student performance. And that monitoring tool, once you put in quarter one's data. At the end of quarter two, you put in quarter two's data, you can see where either you are improving. Or you're staying the same, or you're getting worse. In the past, with the DBA data, usually there was a goal of, you can probably remember this yourself, a fifteen-point goal. For students who did not have fifty-nine percent or higher, you wanted them to have a larger improvement on their second DBA. So that you could actually see that they were progressing to meet the end-of-the-year summative testing goals. So goals are set individually for students as well as for grade levels as well as for the school.
Okay, thank you very much because I'm very impressed with how this is doing, hitting the two areas that we're concerned with. And that we, why collect data unless you're doing something with it? And it helps us identify students, someone I assume is tracking. The, the, the special education teachers are tracking the special education data. The gifted teachers are tracking that, grade levels are tracking the other, and then they're being held accountable. That's why I wanted to hear exactly that when this says monitoring, which I assume we reverse to students also, but at the accountability piece. Because I think everybody knows how I feel about accountability. Congratulations, this is a great model. I'm very impressed. And it's not easy to impress me when it comes to accountability models. So thank you very much for answering those questions.
Thank you, Ms. Camson. Sorry. Okay, thanks. Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I'll be quick. My question's actually directed to Dr. Stallings. First and foremost, thank you for sharing all the various interventions and things that you're doing. That you and your staff are doing at Booker T. to engage the student body, to engage parents, and particularly on the attendance piece. My question is, are you seeing positive results? You talked about a lot about the things that are happening, but are you starting to see that return?
Yes, we are. And actually, today I was looking at my Algebra II students where they, my teacher stays after school with them. So I asked for a report from their pre-test to their first district benchmark assessment. So we are seeing improvements. We monitor our students who are in the after-school programs from the number of E's that they receive from interim run. Until the end of the first quarter as a result of being after school. So we are seeing some improvements. We're not seeing it as quickly as we want, but we take one improvement at a time. But yes, we are seeing improvements in our students' academics, their attendance, and their engagement.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Clanton. Ms. Bessine?
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Dr. Stallings, thank you for being here today and for sharing your story at Booker T. Washington. So my questions are, I guess, a little bit. I guess more geared toward Dr. Gibson with the monitoring and accountability tool that you shared. And it kind of ties into the question I had asked earlier about other academic indicators beyond, you know. PALS, STAR, you know, the, the assessments that are generally given. So, so is this a tool that we're enhancing from before or is this a newly created tool?
This is a newly created tool that we just implemented this school year.
Okay. And up until, up until now, so do we have any data on? You know, that, that can be shared on the percentage of students who, you know, have, you know, been engaged. I'm trying to, you know, been engaged versus not engaged, and then how many students, you know, were failing or received E's first quarter? And then where we are, and then comparing that to, to previously, you know, I'm sure all of you have seen, you know, stuff coming out. From across the country, you know, different districts reporting on increased failing grades among their students. And while, you know, I, I, I'm kind of, again, taking that with a grain of salt here, you know, normally, yes, I'm all about the data. But, you know, right now, even being in it myself with three kids learning from home and just. You know, grades to me are not at the top of my priority list. And so, but, but we still want, you know, teaching and learning to happen. And so, you know, I don't, I don't want to minimize that either. But the, the importance of it, of monitoring that. But I wonder, is there a point when we might be able to look at that data, compare quarter one and quarter two? And is this the tool where? And is this the tool where we'll be able to draw some data at a board level, you know, to kind of figure out as we plan for maybe the summer or next year, what we might need to do?
Ms. Bassin, the monitoring tool that we've developed is for the principals to use at the school level. And it will help them to look at the progress and to see how the children are doing. Our story in Norfolk has also, has always been a qualitative as well as a quantitative story. We work from the beginning of the year into the summer, ensuring that our children are passing and ready for the next grade level. That piece of the story this year is even more important. We are experiencing levels of engagement. If you look at the snippet, you will see where children who did, who did not meet the proficiency level, the tier three, was actually higher than the tier two. And that's because we also are looking at ways to engage our students. And as we capture where they are, we closed out quarter one. When we went home for winter break at interim two, we looked at the interim two data to see if we were able to get some of those students to improve. When we close out mid-year in January, we will be doing the same thing. Our work requires us to look at where they are and to pull them forward. Between now and the end of the school year, we're going to have many children making up work, making up days, getting on board to show mastery of standards, which is why as we move into January through the end of the year, we're going to be looking at our PD in terms of aligning the curriculum to standards and providing opportunities for children to show that they've mastered standards that were taught in previous quarters so that we can bring them along. We have a job, our job this year is harder for our teachers than it's ever been, but they are up to the challenge and they are working. At this point, I would not want to do anything to my teaching staff that would make them feel unvalued or make them feel that we're not respecting their efforts. But just as it is across the country, we are looking at engagement as one of the areas that's, that's an obstacle for us. And we are working and supporting our teachers and families and overcoming that hurdle. So we also look forward to the mid-year data, and we look forward to the end of quarter three data, and then in the quarter four, moving into the summer where we're offering enrichment. We're offering work for incompletes. We're offering work for students who haven't mastered concepts. We're offering summer school to anyone who wants to come and be in the school. So we're looking through, living through this pandemic, recovering from it, and finding ways for our children to thrive.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Bassin and Dr. Gibson, thank you. Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Just an observation, having been through many of these types of work sessions where we review academic data, I just get an overwhelming sense of collaboration, shared expectations, shared values, a sense of urgency, but also a sense of compassion and understanding for what teachers are going through. I'm hearing from the principals, the relationship building that they're trying to establish with the families. And probably during all of this unfortunate times that we are in, that's probably the most important thing that our teachers and staff can be focusing on. It's just those relationships with the families and hearing from them the struggles that they're going through. Some are doing okay and others are not. And that's what I'm hearing from the principals. And I'm so glad, Dr. Birdsong, that you are establishing this sense of culture, of compassion and reaching out. And we know how important the academic data is. I agree with all of my colleagues, there have been so many wonderful questions and topics brought up tonight, whether it comes to making sure that we're considering the ones who are not testing, being mindful of the accountability piece, and not just gathering data just to gather it, but to use it for clear direction. But I just, I'm so, I'm relieved, honestly, to hear the sense of collaboration and the sense of positive thinking that we have as a division. I think it shines brightly on how much we care within our division for our students and our families. And I do think, Dr. Gibson, your final comments about, you know, how are we surviving through the pandemic? How are we moving forward from the pandemic? And what are we gonna, what are we gonna focus on afterwards? Because we know that there's going to be a lot. And so that's just an observation from someone who's seen many of these meetings many times, and I commend you all for the work. I know that there's a lot yet still to be done, but I remain very hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Jordan, go ahead. Do you have something?
Yes, Ms. Tannen, can you bring the slides back up, please? And if you can go to slide 11, please. So I have a similar question as I had for the previous presentation. So we look at the N column, the N in that column, for example, the 9016. Is that enrollment, or is that the number of students who took the DBAs?
The N represents the number of students who took the assessments.
Okay, so the 9016 in comparison to actual enrollment would be what, a guess of it?
For, for last year, I'm not positive, Mr. Jordan. I do apologize, I don't have last year's enrollment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just used, I'm sorry, 80/20 then, that's fine.
The 80/20, I think we're over the 90% mark.
Okay, then, then on the, I just want to go through the next few slides. One of the things that, that you brought attention to was the performance of the black group. So, and if you look on this particular slide in comparison to last year, you see the, go back to where we, yeah, so for two through five, we had a black group of 5188 last year and 4650 this year. And when I'm looking at the other subgroups as we go forward, I'm seeing this consistent gap between the number of African-American students who did DBA testing last year in comparison to this year. If you go to the next slide, please, you see again here. So it's like a 400, 500 student gap there for the, for the sixth or eighth. So as you, one, can you speak to what that is telling you as far as the raw number of students tested? And then as you consider the performance of the students tested, what that might be telling us?
So I think, Mr. Jordan, you bring up a solid point is that, you know, I think our gap from 1920 to 2021 is not fully represented in our enrollment change that we had this year. So I believe that what it tells us is that we had a gap also in where our black students may not have completed their DBA, which goes back to with the discussion we had around engagement that we're really focusing on down at the building level is how are we engaging our students? Because as we want to focus on standards and understanding of standards with the students, we need to make sure that all of our students are providing us this data through these assessments.
So in this virtual learning environment, what, what do you think may be driving the engagement disparities, if you will, for our, our black students in this particular case?
You know, I think it would vary by household on every student situation. It might be different as far as what their engagement is if they have multiple children in the household or if they're multi-generational in the household. It could, you know, if the, more of our black students may have frontline workers or essential workers that are there, and they may not have the same support level at home. I think all those are in play, which is why our principals and their staffs, as well as our social workers and everybody else, we're doing, you know, we're reaching out to families who are not engaged for that exact reason.
Yeah, so I think at a board level, being able to have some sense of the granularity. So if all these different support systems are needed, if we're seeing that at, that some schools may have greater needs than others, that we can have a sense of what type of equitable resources we can provide so that, yeah, I'm just making it up, but let's just say if we found that one high school or one middle school may be experiencing greater challenges with reaching any particular subgroup than another, that we can get a sense at a board level of what that looks like, and then how we can be supportive of the principal and the teacher's needs where that's concerned. So I appreciate, you know, as Dr. Gabriel said, and my other colleagues have said, the quality of the presentations. I also think that some charting and pulling out some of these items where you all are seeing some of these issues like that, that we can spend time really discussing how do we provide support to the, to the needs in the building and the needs in the households would be helpful as far, as far as our presentations and our discussions. The other question I had on this, even as we talk about DBAs, because I know we said we're going to try to move away from that, but in this particular example, when we compare DBAs from one year to the next year, are the DBAs the same?
They might have slight alterations if there are standards that changed at the state level, but they're virtually the same type of assessment, yes.
Okay, all right, so those aren't, those aren't the, they aren't locally created?
They are. They are locally created for our division. However, we keep them consistent so that we can track data over time.
Okay, and I think my last question is, Dr. Gibson, you mentioned something about making sure that we were aligning curriculum to standards. Can you just speak to that again? I didn't quite catch the point that you were making there in terms of moving forward around aligning, making sure our curriculum is aligned with our, with the standards, I think is what I heard you say.
Yes, I did say that. We have to make sure that the written curriculum, the talk curriculum, and the tested curriculum are aligned. And by that we mean when, when we read the curriculum guide, we have specific learning activities, we have specific standards that have to be taught. If we're not teaching it at the right level, then when the children, and we don't make our assessments at the right level, the children may be doing well on our teacher-made tests, they may be doing well on our classwork, they may have good grades, but because we didn't teach the concept at the right level, then the children are not going to be ready to demonstrate proficiency at the appropriate grade level. So as we look at the curriculum guide, we have to make sure that the instruction we're providing and the activities that we use for students to show they understand are at the right level of rigor, they're hard enough for that particular age or grade level. Is that clear?
Yeah, I know we dealt with some of that before, but can you just explain, is that a process that happens throughout the year? Or is that a process that happens at particular times of the year? I'm just trying to make sure I understood.
Excellent question. Our, our Department of Curriculum and Instruction, we have an MPS curriculum guide that is aligned to the VDOE state standards. We also have what we call this year an enhanced pacing guide. And prior to the pandemic, we had a pacing guide for each quarter. The MPS curriculum guide and pacing guide tells us exactly what the learning objective should be. It tells us what activities should be used, what the essential vocabulary is for that, for each particular learning unit. Teachers work in teams to make their tests before they actually start teaching. So they're starting at the end with the assessment, this is what the students need to know. These are the standards. And as they deliver their instruction, they're making sure that the instruction they are delivering are preparing children to show mastery of the skill in the concept. So yes, everything is prepared ahead of time, it's not a secret. It's just a matter of monitoring it to make sure that you might see something that might be fun, but is it really challenging? Are the children really learning? Are they taking what they really need to be able to do away from that activity? Is the question that we constantly have to ask ourselves and be able to say yes to.
And I do have one more. I do hear a lot from members of the community, community organizations, stakeholders that want to be supportive and helpful, whether it's with engagement or additional academic support. What is the process that you recommend we do from the school board level? Do we send them to the building level? Do we send them to the central administration level? What's the preferred path right now under the conditions that we're operating?
And I'm happy to, to address some of that. And Dr. Gibson, you can chime right in. I think the community level is, would be where they should start. I know we have, you know, lots of things going on in the community to support individual households. I know people in various communities, you know, as safely as they can, they're coming together to support families. And so if there is a family that they are aware are struggling for whatever reason, you know, reach out definitely through our faith-based community partners. And if Dr. White were on this call, she would be able to, to talk to you a lot about what we're doing on a weekly base basis to engage our faith-based partners. And they have been tremendously helpful in reaching out to families to make sure that, you know, when the teacher calls, don't forget to return the phone call. Or what is it that you need? Is your child's MiFi device working? You know, is the Chromebook working? Do you have a communication problem? You know, is that in terms of not having a phone at that time or things of that nature? I think that would be extremely helpful because, as you know, our teachers and staff, you know, as a whole are not in the building. So we don't necessarily need physical bodies in the building. But while people are in the community, they need to reach out to the families that they know are struggling. And we will respond to those calls. We are responsive administration. Sometimes people don't like what they, you know, what we have to say, because we're going to always advocate for our children. We're not going to advocate for foolishness and distractions because we have a lot of work to do. But yes, we want our community to engage with us. And I, and our community has been wonderful. But if they know of struggling families, struggling children, let us know so we can ensure that we're putting the supports in place because there may be reasons why particular families can't engage. And I think that's across the board, Mr. Jordan, across the board, not in one particular subgroup.
No, I just wanted to get a sense of, do I send folks to the, you know, in the traditional environment, I would know when to send somebody to the principal versus when to send somebody downtown. I just didn't know under this current environment if there was any recommendation of best practice that we should be following when somebody comes to us and say, I want to help do X.
Mr. Jordan, if you've done that, a lot of people in the community have done that. They have reached out to us via email or telephone calls about concerns about families. And we are responsive to that.
And Mr. Jordan, ask them to email tellus, tellus.com. They can go to any school, they can go to the MPS website, and they can email any school and say, there's a child at this school, if they know the family name. We send messages to each other all the time. If they have, if they have a resource they want to help, they can go to any school. If they email that principal, if that principal can't use that support or the principal wants to know how to access it, that principal will reach out to the executive directors. The community has truly been wonderful through this school year in helping our families and providing things for our teachers and staff. And they can email any school, they can email tellus. They can email me if they go to the SLD website, my email is there. And we will extend that help out to where we can get it, to get help for our children. So please, you know, I'm glad to hear that you want to be able to tell them where to go versus getting all those emails you get. Tell them to email the schools, and we can help them a lot more quickly.
I'm thankful for the emails. I just want to know where to, where to route them when I receive them, that's all.
Near a school, and we will help them.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks, everyone. That was a great wrap-up for our conversation because we have such a generous community that we live in. We're very fortunate to have that. So next item is the School Resource Officer Program and MOU, which we will be voting on at our next meeting. So Dr. Birdsong, who will be presenting?
Yes, so Dr. Gibson is available to answer any questions. As you know, for the last couple of months, we have giving you a draft MOU for our School Resource Resource Officer Program. You have received public comment. And so today's meeting or discussion is just around any questions or or comments that you have that you want to provide to the administration and or of course, to to our community related to this area.
One good. All right. Great. It was out of hand, Mrs. Dean. Are you okay? Good. All right. All right. Thank you so much. All right, moving on.
Okay, I I have something. I thought we were gonna have a discussion.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. So I I think in the I've been giving a lot of thought to to the the SRO program, speaking to some folks in in all different areas. I'm still in the in the position of thinking that we should rethink even further our collaboration, if you will, with with the police department or with safety and and security. I think that since we are in this virtual environment and may be there for for some some period of time, then maybe we can take this opportunity to rethink our whole approach when it comes to you know, our safety and security and get an opportunity again to hear some of the recommendations that I know the the task force worked on. So I'm I'm not in favor at this point of 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 continuing the SRO program as we have it right now. I think even in the existing MOU, as we describe what the SRO is responsible for and what the building is responsible for, I'm not sure it's still clear to me what what our real expectations are for SROs. I do believe we should have security in the building. I do believe we should have caring adults in the building and mentors in the building. I really haven't had anybody be able to kind of explain to me why we need armed police officers. So I would encourage, as we consider coming back in a couple of weeks, then maybe we think about taking this six month period that we may have before we truly get back to a full in person area. Look at some of the CARES Act funding that'll be coming down, that'll be looking to provide support, especially in the area of social emotional health and and assistance, looking again at the trauma informed care. And maybe trying to build a new model of culture of climate support and safety for Norfolk Public Schools that isn't reliant on the traditional SRO model that we've known to date. So I just wanted to share that with my colleagues and and, you know, next week we'll do whatever, or the next meeting, we can proceed how we will will proceed. But I wanted to put some of that out there in terms of this may be an opportunity in this current environment, just as we're learning new things about delivering education virtually, that this could be a window for us to truly reinvision a new approach to the challenges that we may have before us and the opportunities and the strengths to build upon. And also be able to support having some of the officers that are currently assigned to some of our schools being really community resource officers and supporting that community policing effort that Norfolk Public Schools, no, no police department has been doing a great job with in terms of building positive relationships between the police department and the community. And maybe the school system can become a a third leg of that of that triangle. So thank you.
Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Yeah, I I want to reiterate, you know, when you said any questions about the MOU. I I didn't have questions about the MOU, but I share the sentiment that Mr. Jordan just just shared. And I think that was reflective in my budget priorities as well. With the, you know, at some point, you know, if we could get a greater understanding of the CARES Act funding. But I too, wholeheartedly believe in reimagining, not just, you know, a lot of things, but you know, this is one area that I do want to see us be more transformative in and getting away from, you know, having armed individuals in the in the school building, armed police officers in the building. So I just, I want to put that out there as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Thank you both for your comments. All right, moving on to business and finance, we have the budget updates to include the governor, Governor Northam's proposed budget.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Mr. Jenkins, Dave Jenkins, our Chief Finance Officer, will be presenting this evening. He will provide an update on the governor's budget as well as give you an update on our revenue sharing formula with the City of Norfolk. Mr. Jenkins.
Yes, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the School Board and Dr. Birdsong. Ms. Tanner, if you can just move to the second slide. And what I will do is review Governor Northam's budget amendments for K-12 education along with city funding for Norfolk schools. And then we'll also talk a bit about the timeline going forward for developing the fiscal 22 operating budget. Next slide. So last month, actually December 16th, Governor Northam recommended a amendments to the biennial budget. This is actually a short session, so the biennial budget was actually adopted last year. So these are amendments. The, I guess the most important thing for us is there is a hold harmless provision in the governor's recommendations that would pay each locality based on the number of students and the average daily membership last year or this year, whichever is greater. So those districts that were growing and didn't see declines based on COVID would be paid based on their current ADM, while while most of the state would be paid on based on ADM from last year, which is very good news for Norfolk. There is a 2% or funding for a 2% bonus for all standards of quality funded positions effective September 1st. So that's sort of a couple of months into the year and the funding is based on a one time bonus. But the the governor's recommendations would allow us to do something equivalent to a bonus. For instance, a 2% pay raise would be these would be equivalent. There's increases for staffing ratios for guidance counselors, and we'll talk some more about that. There's a restoration of unallotted funds for the preschool program, more specifically, the per pupil amount goes up from 6,326 to 7,655. And for this year, that actually helps a whole lot with the decline in the number of preschool students we have, seeing as we would get more per student. And then there's also a provision to require greater participation of students with disabilities in the preschool initiative. Next slide, Ms. Tanner. Other recommendations by Governor Northam, there's there are grants for provisionally licensed preschool teachers. There are also two provisions to address the suspension of diagnostic testing during this previous spring from March to June. So that there would be funding for English learners and also the early reading initiative. There's additional funding for students that were formerly in foster care to the age of 22. Just new. And there are revisions in locality payments based on estimated sales taxes and lottery sales. So those those accounts were updated. Next slide. On school counselors, the staffing ratios, you see here a a table that contains the current staffing ratios along with the governor's proposals and the existing staffing ratios, at least on average, for Norfolk schools. Currently, standards of quality for elementary schools requires a counselor for every 455 students. At the middle school, it's 1 to 370, 370 students. And in high schools, it's one counselor for every 325 students. The governor's proposal would be across the board and one counselor for every 325 students. In the right column, you can see that for middle schools and high schools, their staffing ratios are actually at a standard higher than the governor's proposed and also the current SOQ. At the elementary level, we have we were averaging one counselor for every 406 students. We currently have on staff 91 counselors. The state is currently funding, providing funding for 68 positions. The proposed budget would increase that to 81 positions. So we actually still have more positions than the state would be funding. There is a provision in the standards of quality that allows school districts to allocate counselors to the place, to the areas of greatest need. And I think you can see that related in our current model where we have council, we have a greater number of counselors at high school and middle schools and in elementary. So while the standards have changed, we actually meet, we are currently meeting the standards that the government proposed across the entire district. Next slide, Ms. Tanner. And this is just a quick snapshot of the budget process at the state level. Last month, the governor proposed amendments to the budget. He does that every year, either a new budget or amendments in the off year. During this month, and actually I believe the General Assembly session started today. But there are, of course, two houses. So the Senate Finance Committee and the House Appropriations Committee will be working on separate budget bills. And of course, they will reflect the the interest of each of the the members of those committees. Those will be forwarded to each house for votes. And of course, the two often do not agree. And if if they're, if they don't agree, and that's almost always, the budget is referred to a conference committee to resolve the differences. The full house, excuse me, the full General Assembly would then vote on the bill and then forward that to the governor for action. The governor can either accept and assign the bill. They may revise it or they could veto it. Generally, what happens is the governor makes some revisions on which are considered by the General Assembly when they come back in April. Next slide. Okay, now we'll talk a bit about the revenue sharing formula or the, it's it's formally known as a revenue allocation policy. This was adopted by a city council in May of 2018. So we're pretty close to three years into this, although this is, yeah, three years in. The policy governs the allocations of the amount of local revenue that is made available to K-12 instruction in Norfolk schools. The formula, under the formula, Norfolk schools receives 29.55% or about 29 and a half percent of the non dedicated local revenues. They, those are primarily the the ones you see listed here, property taxes, real estate and personal property and consumer taxes, things like sales, utility restaurants and hotel taxes, licenses, both business and motor vehicles, and then recreation taxes, which would be the smallest one. The largest is property taxes. There are a couple of other smaller accounts as well. If you move forward. Under the policy, we receive estimates for the upcoming year in September, February and March. Because of coronavirus this year, we received our first estimate in early November. So the city, the city's projecting this was a little behind. We're scheduled to receive update next month and then again in March. The city staff would communicate to us if they're if they're expecting a shortfall in revenue. That would be done well in advance of the end of the year. There is a true up to the to actual revenue that is done after the books are closed. And that's typically in the summer following the end of the year. So our budget contains an estimate of the of the revenue that that the city expects to collect. And we get 29 and a half percent of that at the end of the year. Our actual revenue would be based on the revenue that's collected. Or at least our share of the revenues based on what's collected. And if there's more revenue than is in the city's budget, there would be additional funds coming to us at a later date. If there's less, then we would we would be expected to make up that reduction. Let's see, there under the policy, Norfolk School Board could request a reappropriation of what's called reversion funds. The reversion funds or anything left in our budget at the end of the year, under state law, reverts to the locality. This policy indicates that that those funds can be returned for school uses, generally for non recurring purposes. So this past year, we spent less money than was in our budget. So included in our fund balance that we will review when we release our financial statements to you next month, we'll talk about the amount of money that's in the fund balance and what would be available to the school board for one time uses or non recurring expenses. If the board feels like they need more money than is permitted under the under the revenue allocation policy, we may request an increase in the local contribution. But we would also have to support an increase in the real estate tax rate. And finally, the policy is subject to revision at city councils discretion. Next, next slide, please. Okay, so here we see sort of historical comparisons for three years for fiscal 2020, which was the first year. I said we were in the three years. Next year would be the third year, but the first year, I beg your pardon, fiscal 2020, I think was the second year. At any rate, the the budget allocation for fiscal 20 was 126 million. The final allocation was 124.7 million. So we were about a million three less than what was in the budget. This was because of the coronavirus pandemic. Less money came into the state, or excuse me, into the city, and they had less money to share with us. So there was a small adjustment in our allocation last year. For the current year fiscal 21, we can see the pre-COVID estimate, and this was what based on the budget that this this board approved back in March a year ago. The city revenue was 129 million or this, our share of the city revenue was 129 million. The post-COVID estimate and what is in our current budget now is 121 million. So there was an $8 million reduction based on for city revenue based on the coronavirus. The estimates that were provided us in November are showing that the amount for this year would be 126.4 million or $5.4 million more than is in our budget. And our recommendation would be that we consider that we use those that additional funds towards one time funding. So I guess the takeaway here is the coronavirus, while it has been bad, it is not as, it's not as been as bad on city revenues as was expected back in the spring of 2020. For next year, the estimate that we provided for for fiscal 22 is 127.6 million. So significantly better than the budget, but only slightly above the fiscal 21 estimate. And I guess, and the other thing, there's a note in the blue in the bottom. This excludes some tax revenue that's dedicated to schools for construction, technology and infrastructure. There's a 2% dedication on on the real estate tax rate that is that is for school, construction, technology and infrastructure. That actually is used to pay debt service that the city has. Next slide, please. The, just a little information, I guess, under the hood is to what Um, the, just the little information, I, I guess, under the hood is to what drives the city revenue formula. Uh, you can see real estate tax collections, uh, for fiscal twenty-one. Uh, the revised estimate is two hundred and forty-four million dollars. That rep, that's four point two percent more than the, um, than fiscal, or excuse me, that the growth rate would be four point two percent in fiscal twenty-one. Uh, for next year, there, the city is estimating a growth rate of one point seven percent. For personal property taxes, that's thirty-seven point seven million dollars for this, uh, that the city collects. That's, uh, for fiscal twenty-one, that represents a small decline, one point one percent. Uh, but the expectation for next year would be that it would increase two point seven percent. Sales taxes, uh, the fiscal twenty-one, uh, revised estimate is thirty-six point eight million, uh, which represents six point six percent growth. Uh, next year, the projection is twenty-one point six percent growth. So the projection in the going into what, next year is that the pandemic will be behind us and that city revenues, especially, um, restaurant meals taxes will increase. Excuse me, that was sales and use. Uh, that's for the next item. Sales and use to, ta, taxes did not go down as, as much as was projected in the twenty-one budget. Uh, so that's why the twenty-two number is, is so high. For food and beverage taxes, the, uh, revised, um, twenty-one amount was twenty-seven point eight million dollars in revenue. That was, um, showed a sixteen point four percent decline, uh, from the previous year for fiscal twenty-one. And the, the estimate is a two point two percent increase in the following year. Uh, similar situation for business licenses, that's twenty-nine million dollars of city revenue. There was a reduction in twenty-one and that a large increase is expected in twenty-two. Um, so there, there are other accounts, um, that are also included in the sharing. They're much smaller, but they're, uh, most of them, utility, public service, corp taxes and hotel taxes. Those are increasing, which, uh, certainly indicates that the level of economic activity has certainly started to improve, uh, from the start of the pandemic. Slide eleven. So, um, for the next steps for, for us, uh, this month, uh, the, the leadership team, um, within the administration is working on budget discussions now. Uh, reviewing department requests, uh, reviewing the cost to, uh, to continue, uh, existing services, uh, and, and in formulating a recommendation to you. Um, I think on their original schedule, we were showing that the superintendent would release the budget in February. Um, we're thinking that it'll probably be more like in early March. Uh, in March, uh, the school board, um, would of course, uh, take its action on the budget. Uh, you would have work sessions, there would be a public hearing that we're recommending for March the third. Uh, and then finally you would take action on the superintendent's proposed budget. Slide twelve. Uh, in April, April first is actually the statutory deadline for submission of the school board budget to council. So we would, um, we would need your action in March so that we could, um, we can get that to council and to the city manager. Uh, in May, the city council generally appropriates funding for school, for the school budget. Uh, and if necessary, uh, the school board would have to, uh, might have to make adjustments to the budget based on council's recommendations. And, uh, next slide, I believe we're at the end. There are questions or discussion, we're certainly open for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Um, any hands? Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, thank you. Uh, I just had a brain freeze. Thank you, Dr., um, Martin. So, um, over the break, I had an opportunity to, um, discuss possibly amending the, um, revenue sharing formula with the school board members as well as city council members. Overall, um, everyone seemed to be generally receptive to the concept in when there's a sale of school facilities and land, that we could also experience a cost of sharing revenue, um, in those instances too. There was concern from a few council members, um, in terms of our overall plans when it comes to, um, utilization of buildings. So, what I'd like, uh, Dr. Gay, hmm, I'm sorry, Dr. Martin, uh, Mr. Jordan. Um, if our board is in agreement that our le, leadership, perhaps you two, uh, begin to discuss this matter with, um, the leadership of the other governance body and get a clearer understanding or direct understanding of what their concerns are. And then that could be something that we discuss collectively as a body. Um, perhaps during our retreat, that the facilities, uh, topic, where that topic is going to be included. And then we can just take their concern, their concerns into consideration and see how we can hopefully come up with something that the two of us could be in agreement with and it works to the benefit of all of us.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Smith, and thanks for the work you're doing, um, to try to advocate for, um, for our schools and everything that. Ms. Camson. Oh, Ms. Smith, did you have something else?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is the place for or school board budget priorities. So I'll go ahead and share and then you can tell me where, um, is the better place to discuss it. As we develop this budget, I'd like us to take into consideration also designating not the two percent, um, that goes to debt service that's not here, but perhaps allocating slash designating a certain percentage of the city's revenue sharing that we receive specifically for CIP. And the other, other, uh, thing that I'd like us to consider as a board are the SWIFT funds that we begin to look at those also as a potential designator specifically for CIP. As budgets are being built, that we're shown how these resources can potentially be used in more than one way. Then we would be able to make the decision from there, from the, um, proposed budget that's provided to us. In general, and I'll just share my line of thinking, in general, have CIP budget. We don't receive resources specifically for that. What happens is at the end of the year, when we have the, I think appropriated funds, we tend to roll that over what we asked for, reappropriation. And we roll that over into the next year for CIP. And as we get about three to seven million dollars, but if we start considering other revenue streams that we can bring together and compound it, then we ha, may have more to be able to work with, not just with repairs and maintenance, but potentially for construction of new schools. Uh, Ms. Camson, we talked about this, not a big one, but potentially some of the smaller schools, we may be able to bring the resources together in order to make that happen. But until it's laid out in front of us, um, no, and we'll continually, continuously throw money at smaller things and miss the bigger picture. All right.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, Dr. Burson or Mr. Jenkins, do you have a response or any comments about?
Yeah, I would definitely need some clarity on that because as you know, with the revenue sharing formula, we would likely lose staffing and other resources if we did it, if we moved the funding from what we used to operate the schools to CIP. So that would be my, my only concern with reverting, um, any funding from our established, uh, revenue sharing formula. But perhaps I, I, I could be unclear, you know, regarding what it is specifically that, um, Ms. Smith is trying to achieve. But that, that comes to mind very quickly.
Okay.
Okay, but again, I probably need, just need more clarity in, in around, um, what she's thinking about.
Yeah, we're not going to make any decisions today. So I think that, you know, I, I like the idea of some creative thinking, um, to try to accomplish some of these goals that, that, um, have been perpetuating. So, so thank you, Ms. Smith, for that.
Dr. Martin, I'll share where my thought process is coming from. Year after year, we see a decline in enrollment. We see the releasing of salaries. We see positions not being filled, but yet, um, we continue to prepare the budget considering that internal formula. So if we, the potential is there, let me just say it that way, to look at that a little closer and see if we can carve out a percentage of that and designate it for CIP. We don't fill all the, we don't fill all the vacancies that we, we say that we need. When we come back with the next budget and priorities, some of those pos, positions then disappear and we, we, we start a new. Potential is there.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else getting, um, a weird sound like an in and out with the audio?
It's Miss's audio, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, um, Ms. Camson, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to say that I agree with what Ms. Smith is saying about when we sell the school property, that we should get that money back and put, hold on a second. Okay, sorry, that, that was something I sent to get this clarification. Um, it was, I think it's a great idea if it goes into a lockbox for school, for new buildings or renovated buildings. Because we have no source of money for it, we have to beg, beg, beg for it. Uh, we won't get a lot from, uh, some of those, but we have, excuse me, everyone. Uh, we won't get a lot of money, but we've got one school getting ready to be sold now. We probably, I think, still have Easton on the, uh, um, list to, uh, perhaps move that way. And we have other schools that need to be heading that way. And that would be a source of money for us, um, to at least have a beginning because we've got a lot of schools that need to be renovated or replaced, as we know. I'll start with those two high schools that are going to be very, very expensive. Um, it's my understanding that this was discussed a few years ago by the city council and there was a, at least a tentative agreement to it. Um, so it may be something that's already, if we just remind people, that's already in, in the, um, pipeline. But anyway, I think, uh, Ms. Smith has her eye focused on what we need to do. I know she's on that committee and certainly she's on the audit committee with me. And we have discussed this idea, it was not my idea, it was her idea. Um, and I was very impressed with it at the time and I fully support it. I think it's, we need to have some steady source because we've got a lot of very, very old schools that need huge renovations or replacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camson. Any other comments? Vice Chair Jordan, I see your hand.
Yeah, ju, just, just as quickly as, as I can. Um, so the, so I agree with the strategic thinking that, uh, Ms. Smith is trying to bring forward. What I would caution at this point, when, when I agree with Dr. Bur's song, we need to be careful about the, the operating budget piece. And I know Ms. Smith and I kind of talked about that, uh, one-on-one. The, the other thing I would just say, the, the, as, uh, Mr. Jenkins mentioned, we haven't had this funding formula that long. And part of the reason that we got to this point was, under the old system, the school division really did not know, uh, what to project in terms of putting the budget together. So one of the main purposes of the funding formula was to at least have some reliable source or indication of what we could anticipate from city council. So as Dr. Bur's song was preparing a budget, the superintendent was preparing the budget, you didn't have to wait until you got into this time of the year and go through all the guessing games. You knew much further in advance in being able to prepare. So when we went through that discussion with council and from administration to administration, there was a lot of prep work that went into that. And I would just say that as we consider any changes, it might be a lot on the plate to try to do all those changes and at the same time, um, deal with the, the pandemic, the, uh, the, the CARES Act funding and all the things that we have to deal with. So I do think it's something worthy of discussion. I'm not sure if we can time it all and fit it all in at this point. But I think if we had some write-up on it, we can, we can build from it. And, um, but I do think we can have some of those conversations. But at this point, you know, it's, it's, it's January. I know on the slide presentation, there was talk of maybe not getting the superintendent's budget until, proposed budget until March. I, I think the board needs to understand if we can't get it in February and we don't get it until March, then that means we have to be prepared to have a series of meetings if we're going to have any type of, uh, of review or give and take with the administration about what gets proposed and what we finally vote upon. So I think we need to provide some flexibility and support and clarity to the administration so they can get cranking, um, based upon that schedule that they had. Because again, keep in mind, if we do get the proposed budget in March, we're going to have less than thirty calendar days for us to go through the process of receiving that proposal, uh, doing any type of review or reconsideration that the board may have. And then ultimately, the board's budget then has to get across the street by, uh, by, by April one. So again, I'm supportive of the idea. Uh, I, I think I'd like to see some of that capital improvement money not impact the operating budget if we, if we can. Um, but maybe the timing of when, how we do this discussion in the middle of this budget cycle, I think we also have to give some thought to that, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Um, Ms. Camson and then Ms. Smith.
Uh, just a quick reminder, when I was talking, I was talking about the selling, the selling of school buildings and property and have that money come to, directly to the school, uh, district, going into a lockbox for just school renovation and selling. And, and that was certainly my understanding of what, um, um, Ms. Smith was also saying when she brought that idea up to me, which I still think is an excellent idea. Um. We al, also, um, and, and that doesn't need any, that's, that's just an agreement. And I got that information from a member of the city council just a few months ago, saying that was certainly his understanding from a talk three years ago, that that had kind of already been agreed on. Uh, one other thing real quick, not on this, but if we're talking about priorities, I'd just like to say that we have yet to discuss the school board's budget, which is part of the general budget. And if we're, we got the tight timeline, as Mr. Jordan just reminded us. So we certainly need to have some place in here to discuss our own budget, which is part of the general budget. Thank you.
If, if I may, I, I agree with the, the selling of the property and that was discussed before. I was speaking to the particulars of the funding formula that, uh, drive an operating budget, not the sell of land. I'm, I, I agree a hundred percent with that.
Ms. Smith, go ahead. Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, when it comes to the selling of the property, it's not something that I was expecting us to have resolved this budget cycle, but something that would be an ongoing conversation. But at least have the initial piece of it completed, that we may begin to discuss it, as I said earlier, during our retreat, and then we can continue to build from there.
Right, okay. Thank you. Anyone else? We're good? All right, thank you so much. Next up on our agenda, we have our policy discussion for JGDZ student suspension expulsion. Dr. Po.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Martin. We've seen this policy back in October, and one of the questions that was brought up by the board was the, the having virtual instruction language in there brought it back to policy committee, and we agreed that the definition of within the policy around alternative education programs includes that enough, so that was taken out. So we're just bringing the policy back for your review and open any questions you may have.
Any, any questions or comments about the policy? Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Po.
Thank you.
Hey, um, moving on to future agenda items. The first discussion is about the school board governance training update. So I've spoken with each of you. Everyone had an opportunity to speak with Mr. A.J. Crable, Crable? I'm not sure how to pronounce this. He never told us how to pronounce his last name. And so everyone, one of the conditions that A.J. asked for was that he speak to everyone and that he will only work with us if we unanimously would work with him. So as I spoke with everyone, everyone really had the same comments about him. There is very positive interaction. And so, so what I gleaned from the conversations was that we are unanimous in our decision to move forward with working with him. And one other thing pulled up about that, just a moment. The other thing is that it would be, he's asking for a year and a half commitment of professional services. And what he's asking for monetarily is ten thousand dollars due upfront, and then all remaining fees would be waived if the board honors its implementation timeline. And of course, that would be something that we would talk about the timeline and what that entails. You know, when, when we have our first governance training and that type of orientation. So what he's looking for here is, you know, yeah, we can talk the talk, but will we walk the walk? And so he doesn't want to waste anyone's time. And, and so, you know, obviously, we are all in favor of governance training. We know we need it, and it will be nice, I think, to have, have someone new who has a lot of experience. I sent his, his resume out to all of you. It was on an email a while back. And so you should have read it, and it had some links to some other activities that he's involved in. But he comes highly recommended. He's done, worked with a lot of urban districts across the country. And, and anyways, he's good. I, I, one of the impressions I've gotten from him is he's a good listener and he's very direct. So I feel like, you know, he's an action, action-oriented person that will maybe spark a fire under us and, and get us moving in the right direction. But let's see. Am I missing anything, Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, I, I'll just, not missing, but I'll just add that this is through our partnership collaboration, participation with the Council of Great City Schools. So the, the professional services involves A.J. as being the lead person, but it brings with it also the support team from the council as a whole. So that eighteen-month time period is really involved around some, a initial focus and emphasis on us as a governance team, but also getting us acclimated and prepared to engage the, the community in, in part of our work as a whole. And then we also had conversations with A.J. and with Dr. Burson about trying to align our strategic planning efforts with that governance training effort as well. And so I think at the retreat, or at some time at a later point, when, after we see what the will of the board is, those types of things would be fleshed out. So it would be this time period. It would be with support of the Council of Great City Schools teams, and it would have Dr. Burson and her team doing an assessment whether or not we can align our strategic planning efforts along with our governance efforts, so that the board is able to be clear to Dr. Burson what our expectations are around strategic planning. And then she can go with her team and work with the community to then bring back to us a strategic plan that aligns with or meets the goals and objectives that we have provided to her through this activity with A.J. and the Council of Great City Schools.
Yeah, really about helping us to, to come up with our vision and, and where we're headed. And then Dr. Burson's, Dr. Burson and her staff to really talk about how we're going to get there and what the needs are. So I, you know, it makes perfect sense. Mr. Clayton, go ahead.
Great conversation and commentary about him. I, I, I would agree. My question now is, is what action do you need from the board to proceed? I've heard contract. I do believe that in our school board budget, we do have fees for professional development training that's already set aside. So I just need, I guess, to kind of bring this in here for action for you. What are you seeking from the board? Do we need a motion? You need to agree? I mean, what do we need to do?
No, just wanted to have this discussion publicly. And we don't need, you know, we don't need to vote. Like you said, we already have, we, we're coming in under budget with this agreement. But just, you know, laying out the expectations publicly that we're, we're committed to this governance training. It will be, you know, eighteen-month commitment. And it could be a little more rigorous than what we're used to, but I think that we can do it. And, and we deserve to, and our, you know, our district and our students deserve this as well. And so we haven't been consistent over the past year with our governance training, and I think that this will get us on the right track moving forward.
Okay, I just want to raise the point that, like you did say, we are actually coming under budget. This is actually brain, because I think that we were spending about dollars with another group for training, and at ten thousand, this brings us under. And being able to have a little bit more of a longer period of time, so I'd like to stress that.
I'm sorry, I don't know if it was just on my end, but you glitched out, so I didn't hear all that you just said.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I was just saying that we normally spent, I think we budgeted like twenty thousand dollars, and we're getting ten thousand dollars in training and for a longer period of time. And he does have, come highly recommended, and as I've mentioned, he's out of the solo and independent superintendent there, and I know a council member there speaks very highly. So I look forward to working with him and working with us in the entire process. The board brings strategic plan and everything together, and as well as preparing to engage within our community. So, all right, I'm good.
The other thing I want to mention is, we were looking at early February date for our, for our retreat, which would, when we, when we'd be beginning, when we would start this, this process. There have been a couple of, at least one conflict on our original date. But we, so we need to work that out, and obviously, we have to do that quickly. So you'll be, you'll be hearing from Mr. Jordan and I.
How come we're doing them in four straight days instead of two days and then two days? That's a lot, four day after day after day.
Four days of what?
I thought this, does this go four straight days, the, the training?
No.
Oh, I misunderstood. What, what are, what, so is it two days then?
We were looking at the fourth and the fifth, and, you know, either one whole day, you know, two whole days or a whole day and a half a day. But was that we would have, at the time, we were looking at a joint council, I think it was the joint council school board meeting on the Tuesday, and then our school board meeting on Wednesday, and then training on Thursday, Friday. But all of that has been, it's worked itself out a little bit. So, so no, it won't be four.
Okay, that's fine. Two days is fine. It was four days in a row. That seemed a little overwhelming to me.
But to be clear, the, we have the retreat that we have on the calendar, and then it's the training that we're trying to figure out how to integrate into the process. So it, we, we may end up with something, we, we need to figure that out. But the retreat, we currently have on tap for Thursday, I think maybe Friday. And then we're trying to figure out how to wrap around the, the governance training in that timeframe. That's where I think that three and four-day possibility was being discussed at one point.
So, so the dates are, the dates are the fifth and the sixth?
Or is it Thursday?
The fourth and the fifth.
Yeah, those are what you're looking at.
I, yeah, because I'm, for sereness, I don't have it on my calendar. So the fourth and the fifth are the retreat. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, I didn't have that clarified. Thank you very much for helping.
We don't have the times yet, so we'll, we're, we're working that out. Anything else? All right. All right, moving on to the school board budget priorities. I'd sent, it's, it's posted on for docs, but I'd sent an explanation of what I was doing with, you know, continuing to try to consolidate all of the school work, the priorities that each of you had sent. There's the, the document that's posted is a PDF of an Excel spreadsheet that I worked really hard on. And so you see that, I, I just wanted to identify, just as an overview. So identified each of the board members that submitted their comments, and then aligned each of the descriptions, which was, which is your comment. Tried to keep it as close, you know, copy and paste and not change it as best as I could. And then align it with our accountability plan goals. And then I broke it down into a category, because some of these items fit into multiple categories. So, and then tried to get it, if you just follow to the right, the governance consolidation budget priorities. I tried to do a few things here, is, because there's a lot of, of priorities requested that were repetitive. And so I wanted to consolidate those and then kind of, and then take the language up to something that was more of a governance level language. So instead of getting down, making suggestions that were more at the operational level, I wanted to, to raise it up more to be, to, you know, to the board level. Let's see. So what the, the reason I did this is kind of like, if you, if we, what we just went over a few, you know, a little bit ago, was, you know, how the, the state, it makes, the state's process makes more sense to me than, than this process that we've been doing, where the governor presents the budget to the general assembly. They discuss it, go back, you know, with recommend, recommended changes or not. I really think that that's something, that's a process that we need to be moving for, moving toward. And I think some of the decisions, some of the discussions we're ma, we're having today are going to help us get there with the governance training, with the Dr. Birdsong, when they, going through the process of strategic planning. You know, a lot of, a lot of this back and forth is probably going to go away. And I wanted to, with these budget priorities, to really, the governance consolidated budget priorities is, is try to get us there, even though we, we're lacking that strategic plan, but using what we do have, which is our accountability plan and our, our goals that we've stated in there. And we have also agreed on the, the benchmarks within that plan. And so, so really focusing on this last column here, I'd like to open it up for any questions or, or comments about that plan, because that would be the prior, the consolidated priorities that we would vote on. I know this is different, so just trying to do better moving forward with this process. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to add that I think that part of what your effort here and, and the, and the team's effort here was to also align what you have in the far-right column with what we've, for the most part, already have within the school board accountability plan. So for the most part, what's there aren't new things. They're just an effort to try to align them with what the board has already discussed for the most part, and then allow Dr. Burson to put her pieces together. And then if we want to come back and look at anything additional or differently, then that's what we would do to this process. So I just wanted to reiterate that, for the most part, what you have in the right column, you pulled from or aligned with what's already in the school board's accountability plan.
Right, that's what, that's what this document's supposed to show from left to right. The mapping process of how I got to, to the right side, to that final consolidated side. So it's that, you know, right there in that column. Mr. Clayton, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Martin. I kind of expressed back in email that that I was pretty pleased with the document. I don't have any, there's nothing really, I guess it would say down on the hill for, it's, it's good. I, I think that this allows the Dr. Burson and her team, as Mr. Jordan has mentioned, you know, items that are already in our accountability plan that we've already identified, but for them to be able to look to the left of specific items that board members may have brought up, they can, in the consideration as they're crafting, but also keeping in alignment with the accountability plan. So I'm, I'm fine with what we have here, and if we're, you know, I'm an approval. So we're going to vote whatever, but I
Right, we'll, we'll vote it at our, our business meeting, but I appreciate your comments. And, and so that is why, you know, again, I wanted to, I didn't want to mess with what you all, or tried to paraphrase what you all had put in here. I wanted it to show that, you know, you might have said it one way and someone said it a different way, and I think it's valuable to have both of those included in this document. So, anyone else? Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and thank you for all the effort that you've put into this. And I want to just comment on the way you did it and keeping the integrity of everyone's original submission. I like the direction that you're proposing. We go in with this, and I support it as well.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, um, yeah, we'll just be prepared to adopt the priorities then in the governance consolidated priority, our budget priorities on, at, at our business meeting. And in moving forward, we're going to keep refining this process, hopefully, you know, in the years to come. And we'll have a strategic plan that we can really point to. And, and again, just like we, we just had the discussion today with the grades, is identifying, you know, benchmarks and, and goals and meeting them, and, and really relying on that strategic plan to do exactly what a strategic plan's supposed to do. And, and I think it's going to streamline the process moving forward. So thank you for your support. Okay, next, we have board member requests for consideration. I was going to say something, but go ahead, Ms. Vaseen.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Martin. Could you, so earlier, just a few minutes ago, we talked about this, the, the meeting, joint meeting with city council. Could you, or, and Mr. Jordan, perhaps elaborate on some of the topics that may be discussed during that meeting, and if we could at this time provide some input as well on some of those things?
Well, we are, right now, I think we may, Ms. Tanner, do we have a date yet? Has the date been confirmed?
Hold on one second. Okay, I'm trying to unmute myself. I have not heard back from her as of today.
So we are still looking at some dates, but we haven't, we haven't really talked about an agenda for that meeting.
Well, that joint, oh, you mean the joint school board and city council, I thought you were talking about the four. I thought you were talking about the four of you. That one, they picked March 9th.
March 9th, okay.
March 9th.
Um, and so I think, you know, it'll be really important to, to talk to them about, you know, about some updates, some things that, you know, on our, you know, education planning and, and some of our, you know, just how, really talking about how the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted our schools. And, and, you know, we've talked about it, I'm tired, it's leading me right now. But I know we did start to have a conversation just briefly between Mr. Jordan and I about, and Dr. Birdsong about, you know, what something, what are kind of coming up with, well, what are we going to ask them? Like what, you know, what, how's that back and forth going to go? So I'm really open to any topics that you might have.
Okay, well, I, I shared with you all in an email shortly after about some things that, you know, whether it's in the joint meeting or, you know, it's a meeting of the leadership of the, of the two entities that can then come back to the school board. But, you know, of course, you know, we, we've said many times about having updates about St. Paul's and the impact that it's having, you know, on our neighborhoods and our schools. And, you know, where we are with that, especially with some of the, you know, recent activity that, that's happened there that, you know, I think it's important that we, we, we do, as we say we want to do, which is, you know, keep our eye on, on that and receive regular updates, which I know that's, that's probably happening. But, you know, I think it'd be good for the board to be able to receive some of that information as well. The other thing is, you know, if there are any efforts or anything, you know, Dr. Birdsong, that, that we can help advocate for the schools, school system, you know, whether it is, you know, academic needs for, of our students, whether, and, and I'm thinking more like, you know, if we need to establish additional sites perhaps for, you know, where students can receive in-person learning, where even through the summertime, whether, you know, whether it is with, you know, advocating for expanding and prioritizing testing, you know, COVID testing, I'm not, you know, I, I just, I have a lot of thoughts about ways that we could be strengthening our partnership and advocating together. And, you know, I, I'd like to hear if you have any thoughts about what those might be so that we can work together on those issues. I don't know if there's any comment. And then there's obviously, you know, you said COVID related stuff. You know, if there's additional CARES Act money, you know, what are, what are our needs to implement? You know, all of the mitigation strategies. I know that we have the supply that we need right now. But, you know, again, you know, tracing and testing are important measures for infection control that are going to go on beyond, you know, vaccination efforts. And are, do we have what we need to, to, for, for our teachers, for our students? You know, how can we prioritize them for testing? Because right now, you know, especially with, with case incidence being so high, many of them have to wait several days to get a test and then the result. And, you know, I've had questions about how do we, how do we make them priority groups? And I don't know if it's the city or if it's the health department, you know, how, how we can work together to make that happen. And I'm sorry, I'm looking at my notes. But anyway, I, I just, I just think there's a lot of room for greater partnership and, you know, have been interested to hear what conversations the, the just district has been having with our city partners and, you know, where, where we might expand on that. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add to that. You asked, let me see, the other couple, two other things, open campus. We, I don't believe we've had an update about open campus in a long time and, in quite some time. And, you know, I want to make sure that that doesn't fall off. And I don't think that that has been recently brought up, that it might not be on the chart that you had put together. But so I just wanted to make sure that that's
I don't recall anyone including open
Yeah, I raised it before, but at, before, when we didn't have a chart of all the previously requested agenda items. So I want to make sure that open campus is also on our radar as well. Let me see. That's it for now.
Yeah. Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Just one response to Ms. Bessine regarding St. Paul's quadrant. We definitely could bring that up during a council meeting. I also want to suggest that we could also receive an update during the retreat when we discuss facilities, because Dr. Gabriel and I have been receiving updates from facilities regarding the impact of St. Qua, St. Paul's quadrant.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Just Dr. Martin. Mine is just a respectful piece here when we do these agendas, just that we try to remind of the timeframe. If we're saying 6:30, I know we had some great, robust discussion, but just in, you know, for the staff members who are here and those who are watching, if we're going to say 6:30, that we kind of keep trying to bring it in there. I'd say we haven't had a good discussion, but if we just can be thoughtful about and intentional about our thoughts so we can try to stay within the timeframe, that's all.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Smith.
Last one. This is school board consideration, right? Request for consideration?
Yes.
Okay, so thinking beyond the pandemic, and we know that the governor is considering year-long, year-round schooling. I think that's something we as a board should take under consideration anyway. Something to look into in terms of post-pandemic, something we may have to implement to bring our students back up to speed.
Okay. So reimagining what the school year might look like.
Yeah, it may not be year-long, maybe it's a longer time, I don't know. But I think the potential exists for us to have to think of something different to do.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Ms. Sampson?
Oh, might want, and that's certainly, you know, an idea to look at. But remember, we've tried it before, year-round school, we've tried it before and it was very unsuccessful. So you might want to look, look back at that information.
When was it tried before? Do you, do you remember the years?
Sometime in the last 15. But it was, there were, it, it was, it sounded so wonderful. I mean, I just thought it sounded like such a great idea, but if you do year-round, that means you're going to have to break up the teacher's time because they're only on 10 months. So that means you went six weeks on, two weeks off, which sounded good because the two weeks off then could be used for in-depth interventions for the children that were struggling. You could just see how it just sounded so good. But the, we lost a lot of the kids because the parents didn't want to have their children separated with time schedules. They didn't want, they didn't want some kids to be off for two weeks. So we had a lot of parents that pulled their kids out of there and asked to have them transferred to, you know, other schools in the district so they could be on the same summer schedule as, as the family and their siblings. Teachers, a lot of teachers asked for transfers out because they don't like the schedule either. They're, everyone's used to, I mean, you can't try new things, but that was a big problem too, getting teachers to stay there because they didn't like the schedules. So there's a lot of unforeseen consequences that you don't always think about. It certainly doesn't mean you can't do it again, but I'd certainly start looking at the research because when they started running, you know, running the test score, so obviously this was after 98 or so when they started the testing. And, and see, when they started running that they were seeing no improvement, they were just getting flat scores in those schools. There weren't a lot of them. There, there were elementary schools, four or five maybe at the most. I, I don't remember exactly, but I'm just saying, be careful. As you, look, look at the data nationally and then talk to some people that were involved in it. There are probably still a few people that were involved in it left in the district.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Sampson.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bessine, can you close us out today?
Yes, I'm going to close it out and I'm not going to get into a deep discussion about the year-round school. But that, the comment reminded me of, of, related to a previous agenda topic, which is that, you know, I think if I heard Mr. Jenkins correctly, that there, that we would be discussing some unspent funds that, you know, I would like for the board to consider or, you know, receive some information if we're able to provide our teachers who have been working so incredibly hard. If there is, if there are funds available to provide a stipend for our teachers for this year, you know, that's something that I would like for us to, to really look at. Because even as we think about year-round school, I can't imagine, I, I typically am in favor of that. And I, I just don't know how that's going to work this year with the significant burnout and for students and for our staff. But I'll just leave that there.
Okay.
Thank you. Clear, the administration has already been looking at that.
Oh, great.
On that.
Great, great, thank you.
After Birdsong. Okay. With that, and any hands? No? Okay, good. All right, well, that was a great meeting. I know it went a little long, but, you know, we, we just can't get enough of each other after the break. So, okay, with that, adjourn the meeting. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.